We'll go ahead and call the City Council meeting of January fourteenth to order. Can we begin with a roll call, please?
Councilmember Norton.
Here.
Councilmember Harland.
Here.
Councilmember Becharan.
Here.
Councilmember Termani.
Here.
Mayor Bochard.
Here. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We're going to begin tonight with some presentations, so if I could get Roy Johnson and James Wallace to come forward, we have a couple art and cultural commissions to present. Come on up, all the way in the front. Our TV camera's right there, so you can stand. Roy, I bought it. Nice to meet you. James, good to see you here. I think we have, yeah. So why don't you guys stand here and face the cam right there. Got one for each of you. So we'll start with you, Roy.
Thank you.
Ten years of service on the Art and Cultural Commission as an art professional, which is quite a long time to dedicate to the city of Capitola. We spent thirty-two years creating residential commercial light fixtures, and even though we're going to miss you on our Art and Cultural Commission, your artwork is in this town. And I've got one picture I'd like to put up here that everybody can see. This is one of your handiworks, and it will remain in our house in the Fairmont. People at home can't see this, but in the building here, this is in the Fairmont Hotel, Fairfield Hotel on Forty-First. And what a great creation.
Thank you.
And I'm sure you enjoy making it.
I do.
So we've got this certificate for you. And I'm going to give you the microphone. I'd just like to say a few words.
Well, it has been a real pleasure for ten years, being associated and getting to know all of the people in our community, which is a real added benefit. You know, working with Mike and Dennis on the commission, I could say, you know, they're so enthusiastic about our city that things are in good hands. I had, and, you know, with leading James and all the other commissioners, it's been a real pleasure for me. And I hope to continue, you know, contributing in some way, and so you're not going to get rid of me too soon.
We'll call in. At that point, we'll take that commitment. Thank you very much for your service. And James, you served on the commission for eight years as a member-at-large, and I was lucky enough to serve on the general plan committee with you, and I know you're an active participant in every committee you're on, and you bring a different perspective and insight, so I know you added that dimension to the Art and Cultural Commission. So thank you for your service. And here's your certificate, and I'm going to give you the microphone.
Thank you, Mayor Bochard. It was a lot of fun, and art and the music and everything we do is always very positive. And I want to thank everybody on City Council, Mike and Jox and Dennis and everybody, for all the support that the City Council gives to the arts. We couldn't do it without you guys either, so keep up the good work. Remember to look to the future. Don't look backwards, guys, you know? And keep up the good work, and we'll be around. We'll be watching you.
Neither one of you is going away. I can tell that, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next group we'd like to recognize is our Library Ad-Hoc Committee, and those five members, I have a presentation for, Beau Kazer, Barbara Gorsen, Dave Kramer, Gail Ortiz, and Lisa Spinegrove. So if you could all come forward, we'll... Barbara? Hi. Lisa, hi. Gail?
Me, too.
Over on this side. We'll split it up. We'll go two and two. So Dave Kramer's obviously not here, okay? So we'll go without that. So Beau, I'm going to start with you. You remember on the committee, and obviously I think you got involved in the committee because you live right around the block from the library, and so that was a key interest to have an input into what was going on in your neighborhood. So we appreciate your time and commitment to serving on the ad hoc committee. And here's a certificate for you. Say a few words.
Sure, why not? Well, I was the latest member to join the team, so to speak, and I certainly enjoyed the couple of years that I had a chance to listen to everyone's input. And clearly, it's a dedicated group of individuals who are focused on getting the best library we can for the city of Capitola, and I look forward to that day when it's built and completed and to enjoy the fruits of everyone's labors here.
Great. I think we all look forward to that day. Next, Barbara Gorsen. Barbara, you're the icon of the library committee, from my research, okay? You're a longtime advocate, two terms on the Library Joint Powers Board, member of the Friends of the Library. Obviously, this is a serious commitment to you to have this wonderful library in Capitola, so we thank you for your time on that committee. Here's your certificate, and give us a few words about how you feel about the library.
I've got way more than a few words for that, but...
Your turn.
Clearly, I'm a little library-obsessed. When I retired, I went back and got my degree in library science. But I am passionate about libraries, and I think that our Capitola library today is a great library, as witnessed by the numbers of people who use it. And I'm really excited about a new facility and building our new branch and having it be the A1 library in the system.
Great, thank you, Barbara. I think we all share that enthusiasm in this town. Dave, thanks for joining us.
My pleasure.
It wouldn't be the party without you being here, so...
Thank you, Pirate.
We'll go to Lisa next. Lisa, you've been a member of this town for a long time, forty years as a high school educator. You're obviously committed to education, and I know you're serious about having a great library here in town, so we appreciate having your time on this committee and look forward to a little bit more years of service for you. Here is your certificate, and give us a few words.
Well, the only thing I have to say is I was around when the library got put there. I was part of the team of the mayor at the time for Capitola Library, so it's nice to see it come full circle. And if I wasn't a teacher and I didn't like to talk so much, I would have been a librarian.
I think that's a compliment. That's a good way to look at it. Let's see, did we have... So is Dave's certificate here?
Working on the commission, on the ad hoc committee is a must. Thanks.
We're going to find that. We're going to say a few things. I know that you're a local resident, and you're a literacy teacher, and you're in history and marketing, and you're involved in many committees on Capitola. We appreciate the time you dedicate to this town because you give your time selfishly. So thank you for your time on the ad hoc committee, and give us a few words.
I've been kicked out of most libraries.
I guess that's a good comment, so I'm not sure. Okay, well, I do have your certificate, Gail, so anyway. Obviously, Gail, longtime resident, business owner, dedicated to the library. The one comment I know you're serious about is you want to make this library the best library in Santa Cruz County, and I think that's the best word we can all say. If we end up with that as an end product, I think all of us will be happy. So thank you for your time on the committee, and we look forward to continuing to be involved on the new library.
Thank you. I look forward to it, too, and I'll be tapping everybody for the new committee, for the new library, not this one, but the one where we raise money for our new library very soon.
Thank you all. A big round of applause for our Library Ad-Hoc Committee.
Dave?
I'll mail it to you, sorry.
With James and Roy off of the Arts and Cultural Commission, what's going to happen to the quality of music that we have on the Wednesday night concert?
Funny you should mention that. Mr. Mayor, we will be meeting in three weeks or two weeks from tomorrow to choose the music for this summer, and there'll be four members of the Art and Cultural Commission and two at-large music aficionados coming to help us, and that'll be James and Roy.
Okay, I feel safe.
We didn't let you go for very long. That was about two minutes, so thank you for your continued participation. But I will continue, Mr. Councilmember Norton, to protect us from the Pounders, and we all know what that means. Thanks, Roy. There was a band called The Pounders that had some criticism, so Roy takes a lot for that. I'm sure there's some significance to that, but with that, we'll move on to a report on closed session.
Yes, there was one item of potential litigation on closed session this evening. As identified on the first page of your posted agenda, there was no reportable action.
Thank you. Are there any additional materials that we received that need to be made available?
Oh, we did receive one additional material regarding item 8A, and it has to do with appointments. The applicant for the advisory council to the area on aging has withdrawn her application. That was all.
Okay, great.
Not my relative.
Thanks for clarifying that. All right. City manager, any additions or deletions to the agenda? Staff has no changes. Okay. That brings us to the public comment period of the meeting, where we allow people to come and speak for three minutes on any topic that is not on the agenda. Please sign your names so we know who you are, and come forward and introduce yourself. Hello, Elizabeth.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Russell. Should I sign my... Okay. I wanted to speak to you about the EIR for the Monterey Skateboard Park, and I brought some handouts.
Give those to the city clerk.
Okay, yeah. Thank you. I did submit comments, but I'm not going to be here next week for the planning commission. I'm going to be out of town, so I wanted to take this opportunity to speak with you now just to encourage discussion. My concern is specifically to the area of the noise impact evaluation, and I noted in the document that we did not do a noise impact evaluation for noise that would occur throughout the twenty-four-hour day, specifically in the nighttime. And my concern and my hope is that when we're looking at doing an engineering project of this size and scale, that we go ahead and get this additional data. It's something that can be modeled easily enough. And then when we're actually looking at a design, specifically with the sound walls, we're taking into account the difference between nighttime noise and daytime noise, because if you read the study that was done by the sound engineers on the skateboard park, which is in my packet, that's a study that they've done on only nighttime noise. And there, they show that in three out of the five times where they're evaluating the park, when the park is technically closed, the park is hitting decibel levels of seventy decibels, seventy decibels, sixty-seven decibels. And in confirming with our community development director, it looks like we don't ever want to have anything over sixty. So if we're not to have anything over sixty, and here we have an existing example of how it's hitting seventy, seventy, sixty-seven, we now, at this time, could go ahead and design the sound walls so it would mitigate against that. But if we haven't even done the study, how are we going to know that? And that's why I just... I pulled a few pages and I copied them in color so you could see the difference. In those, you can see this very well-done study where it shows the sound without any sound wall, and then it shows it with a two-meter sound wall, and it shows it with a 2.5-meter sound wall. And you can see the difference. And I'm not suggesting that this is the right height or anything like that for our park, but what I'm suggesting is that our planning commission and our entire leadership really consider that it's important to have this data and to know how we mitigate it in the best way, because that way, the donor would actually pay for this additional study, and the donor would pay for the mitigation. If we have to do it after the fact, after the park is already built, then the city has to pick up those costs. And just in terms of preserving the neighborhood, that would be the really best thing to do, I'd suggest. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, Wade. Mr. Mayor, excuse me. Peter Wilk, I'm on the Commission on the Environment, and I'm here to appeal to the audience, both here and at home, to volunteer for the Perry Park Habitat Administration Project, which is not this Saturday, but the following Saturday, the 23rd of January. My appeals to the local high school kids fell kind of flat. So far, we have one official volunteer out of two high schools, so I'm putting out some flyers and I'm beseeching those who are listening today to donate just a couple hours of your time next Saturday morning from nine to noon is really what we have scheduled, and that is to return Perry Park, first step, to return it to a riparian habitat. And that first step is just to start to get rid of the English ivy. So all we're asking is for hands to pull the ivy. The gloves will be provided, tools will be provided, we'll have some instructions beforehand, but really looking for volunteers for... We'll supply some coffee and maybe some cookies, you know? But really looking for people to volunteer and just to, again, to get rid of the English ivy, because that's just... attracts basically rat infestations. And so they call it a green desert. We want to get it back to its natural habitat. Ivy's killing the trees in the area. So this is step one towards... It's actually about step three, in working towards getting that creek back to its natural state. So anybody who's interested, just call the City Hall. They'll get you in contact with Danielle Uharriet, who's coordinating all the volunteers. We want to get a head count so that we know, you know, how many gloves to bring and what we're dealing with. So please, call the city and get ahold of Danielle or Linda and help us out. Thank you very much.
Peter?
Yes.
So I understand there's going to be training, and who are you working with on that? And the history of that person, I think, has been tremendous with helping us in Capitola with many environmental projects.
So George McMenamin is our consultant. He's been working with Capitola for a long time. He's already had a very successful project right behind Nob Creek, where there's a very successful microenvironment where it has been restored to a natural habitat, and you can see all the native plants and animals that are coming back to that area. And what we want to do is extend that further downstream to Perry Park, and George has done this successfully. He's worked throughout the Monterey County as a successful environmentalist, and he's kind of leading this charge so that we do it right. So hopefully, we'll get it done.
Thanks, Peter.
Mr. City Manager, any way we can advertise that on the city website or somehow broadcast that? Absolutely. Okay, good. Let's go ahead and follow through with that, get some more exposure for it, and hopefully at least double or triple the numbers of what you've got, okay? Is there anybody else that'd like to speak at this time, public comment? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period, and we'll move on to City Council comments. Any comments from the City Council?
I have a flyer for a meeting that let everybody know. January 28th, 7:00 to 9:00, open house at 6:30, New Brighton Middle School. County of Santa Cruz, Regional Water Management Foundation, and Santa Cruz County LaFco invite you to a conference, Connecting the Drops, Working Together for Water. Keynote speaker, California Natural Resources Secretary John Laird. So John's going to be here in Capitola, and I would encourage people to come, and a panel discussion, and then informative stations on water recycling, groundwater recharge, stormwater management, Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, water conservation, you know, different things. So if you have some questions and you're thinking about putting... You want to put in a gray water system, come to this, come to the workshop, and you can talk to experts and get some more information about this. And apparently, we're cosponsoring it, but that's... I hadn't heard of it before. Have you heard it? Did you hear about it? I mean, our name's on there. Cosponsor.
I know it's the same night as our meeting, so we won't be able to...
Yeah, yeah, we won't be able to go. That's all.
Dennis?
Yeah, I want to thank our Public Works Department for getting our pair back online the day after the biggest El Nino storm we've had so far this year. We lost both sewer and water connection there, and they were back in business next day, and thank you to our Public Works for watching over that very valuable asset, and it kind of gives us a warning about that wharf out there. We should be paying more attention to it.
Good comment. Yeah. Councilmember Becharan?
Yeah, let's see. I went to an interesting talk the other day. Jimmy, maybe you could comment on it or give us a report. So the environmental law in terms of recycling green waste is now being implemented in this area, and I think someone was sent from our staff, because I did... I think Ryan was there, so... But basically, we're going to start picking up green waste and trying to recycle it, and I don't know if RC is going to be as involved in it as... Because we don't generate that much, but I've heard some talk around the Espinots working with some of the restaurants there. I don't know if this is true, but...
Are you talking about our organics program for the wet waste?
Yes, right.
Yes, that was a program, I think, we set up a number of years ago for commercial organics recycling, and as part of our contract with Green Waste, it is all down to the Marina landfill.
So is that being expanded, because there was a meeting in Castroville about this?
Looks like Larry is going to provide us some insight.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. There was a meeting. It's Assembly Bill 1826 is implementing mandatory commercial compost recycling for all... It's going to be a tiered, so generators of over eight cubic yards of organic waste a week, which is actually nobody in this city, are the first step, and then they move down. We've actually had a program to identify our larger green waste...
Generators.
Generators, pardon me. And our franchise hauler is actually taking care of that already. So we're ahead of the game on this, but we still have to make sure we comply with all the rules. So we've actually had a pilot program, and we're actually doing it as a regular program for most of our larger generators. So the law just came into place January 1st, but I think we are ahead of the game.
Okay, great. Okay. I have something else to talk about. I left some flyers on the back. Some people might be interested in this, and this is Proposition 47, Record Change Resource Fair. I had a friend the other day who's out of work, having a little difficulty with making his house payments. So I said, "Why don't you apply for a job?" And he... These are some of the, like Costco, various places that are... You would think he'd be able to get a job, right? He could not get it because of a record issue. And so this new proposition, which we passed here in California, may be able to help get nonviolent felony like drug possession or shoplifting removed from your record. So basically, you could get a chance of getting a job if you have to check that box. You don't have to check that box anymore. There's a lot of programs that deal with college loans, student assistance, and other programs that will now be made available for you. So this fair is on the 28th from 3:00 to 7:00 at Temple Beth El. So this is something that could actually change someone's life, someone that right now finds it very hard to take part in programs that are available, including getting a job, which is something that we would like people, after they get out of prison, to be able to get a job and support themselves. So tell your friends. It's at Temple Beth El on the 28th from 3:00 to 7:00. If you want to find out more information, go to United Way website. They're one of the sponsors. Thank you.
Councilmember Termani, any comments?
I just have one, just as I see Steve just back there. I'll go ahead and ask you. Since we just talked about Perry Park, I happened to be down at Nob Hill today, and I noticed that the work is in progress for the ramp, and if you could just give us an update on where that project is.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The last of the railing went in, I believe it was actually today, probably right before you got there. There's still some minor welding that needs to take place and some truncated dumps to go in, but it's like 99.5% complete and should be complete sometime next week.
I have a follow-up question.
Steve, I understand the need for the switchback and the gentle slope, but it seems that the final ramp up to the bridge exceeds the ADA requirement.
It does not. It's been checked by our building official, and I shared that concern, and...
Just visually, it looks...
Double-checked, and no, it is less than the 8.3 that it's allowed. It's considered a curb ramp of less than 15 feet, so it is in compliance.
Thank you. I noticed in a couple places it appeared to have slope, and without having a meter, just, I'm sure that it is, after all this effort, but you're right, to the eye, it appeared that... But it looks fabulous. It's a great project, and it's something that's like 99%, so I'm going to say it's going to be open soon.
Should be open sometime. Hopefully, ended next week.
Perfect. Thanks for that report.
Would you like updates on other Capitola projects?
While you're up there, I would love a CIP update. That would be great.
Thank you. So the paving on 38th Avenue is going out to bid, and bids will be received on February 17th. I know you want dates for the public hearings, but I've got some right-of-way notifications that need to get received and acknowledged before we can schedule the public hearings on the Roundabout and on Hill Street, so those going out. It's going to happen in February. I just don't have a date yet. The other public meeting we're waiting for is Park Avenue. Unfortunately, I don't have the material to send out with that yet. I have two consultants trying to get it to me as quickly as I can, so again, we're trying to get that one scheduled. Perry Rissman already talked about the Capitola Ave drain. You can see that's ongoing, slowly and surely, moving pipe up the street and getting bigger pipe on it. It actually has a fall on it. I'm going to start... I'm starting to lean on the contractor to get the sidewalk put back together, and he's been in and out with the rain, so I think that'll be our next focus. We are going to cross the street and replace that culvert as part of this project, and that'll probably take place in conjunction with putting the sidewalk back together. McGregor Park, we received the 80% design submittal this week, and actually, last week, and we're getting comments and reviewing that right now. Hope to go to bid in that in February. And then the enhanced bike lane project, I met last week with the bike advocates who represent the city. We reviewed some preliminary plans. They gave me some feedback. We're now making some minor adjustments based on that feedback, and we'll be submitting that for a Caltrans permit. Unfortunately, the Caltrans permit, I estimate, will take at least three months to get, so we're quite a bit... Ways off on that, but I think we have the final design in place.
You're going to come back to us later on Stockton Bridge with another report?
Yes, yes.
And I've been going by that vice project almost on a daily basis, and it's... The rain has really upheld that project. I'm glad we pushed it forward, even though it is in conflict with the weather, and that's something we may look at as we go down the road as far as scheduling, especially in light of the El Nino and its potential to slow down projects. But I'm glad we moved forward on that project, because at least the drain's operational now.
Yeah, I think it was important to get that drain in and let him work between the rainstorms. I think it's working. We hired a smaller contractor, which maybe has slowed it down a little. He's a one-man crew with whoever he decides to bring to work with him that day, but he's giving us a hand-built storm drain, and it's really nice to see the effort and care he's putting into it.
He's a one-man knowledgeable crew, so I will attest to that.
Yes, he is, yeah.
It's a good choice.
Mr. Mayor, Steve, one more question. Stockton Avenue intersection?
Yes.
We received bids back, is that correct?
Yeah, there's a report on it later tonight on the agenda.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
We'll get another shot at it.
Thank you.
Are there any other staff comments?
There were two other items I wanted to bring to your attention relatively quickly. Just wanted to let everybody know that we've installed nine unique pieces of art down at the Police Department as part of our ongoing art and cultural program. These are pieces that were done by New Brighton Middle School students, students in Roy Segura's class, and Roy has partnered with the city numerous times on several public art projects. So just wanted to let everybody know, if they get a chance to go down to the Police Department to check that out. In addition, just wanted to point out to everybody that next week, we will be having king tides, so there's going to be the tides, I think, starting on Tuesday, Wednesday are going to get over six feet for the highs. And there is... The models have been flipping back and forth. The forecasts aren't definitive, but it's looking like potentially Monday, Tuesday could be some... uh, Monday, Tuesday could be some pretty heavy rain events, so everybody needs to be aware, monitor the weather, and, uh, make sure you are safe.
Okay, thank you for that update. Um, with that, we're gonna move to a, uh, boards, commissions, and committee appointments. I'll turn this over to Sue, are you gonna run this for us?
Uh, yes, I am, thank you.
Okay, great, we'll let you have at it.
Okay, we do this annually, review all the, um, city council representation on various county, multi-county boards, and also the city council appointments and reappointments to the city internal advisory bodies, and also the Oversight Board for the Capitola Successor Agency. So, the city manager's put on the board the list of all the different, um, boards and commissions, so we'll review those one at a time, and if it's okay with the mayor, I'm just going to mention the, the, uh, boards and commissions that require appointments. All of the boards and commissions are listed on the screen, but we will only review those that are requiring appointments.
That works for me.
Okay, then we'll start with the Finance Advisory Committee, and, uh, there are six positions open, one for the mayor, the vice mayor appointee, and, uh, each of the remaining three council members have, uh, appointments, and also for a business representative. So, on your screen, you'll notice the incumbents, Nathan Cross and Will O'Sullivan, Bridget Estey, and then we have a new applicant for the business representative as recommended by the Chamber of Commerce Board, uh, which is Matt Arthur. So, if you'd like to go ahead and we can make appointments one at a time.
Is there a consensus of the board to, uh, to do, with what to do with that proposal?
Usually, it's the mayor and the vice mayor for the finance committee, and I really like having Will O'Sullivan on the committee, so I'll defer if you want to have another council member that would like to volunteer to be on this committee.
Would, uh...
He doesn't want to do it, though. I may change my mind, but I, I forgot to check with him to see whether he does want to continue.
Councilmember Turman and Bertrand, would, would you, would you, uh, like to remain on the committee as the representatives from the city council?
Yes.
So, are, are you okay with leaving your representative there?
That's fine, thank you.
And Stephanie with Will? And I'm fine with mine. I guess the only question is, 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 uh, Sandy Carcello, um, not wanting to be on this board, or is this...
That is correct.
She is withdrawing, and, and we're asked to put Matt Arthur replaced, so is there a recommendation from...
I'll move Matt Arthur as the business representative.
So, that would be the, the, the existing board with Matt Arthur, and we in consensus with that?
Yeah.
We need a motion on that?
Yes, yes, let's get a motion.
I second it.
In a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries unanimously, Sue, with, uh, the existing board and the replacement of Matt Arthur.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next, we'll go to the Santa Cruz Public Library System Commission. As you know, the, uh, county library system has, has had somewhat, um, reorganization, and the city manager can go over any questions you have regarding the reorganization. And so, we have one position to fill, which is an appointment to that commission, and we have received one application from Barbara Gorson.
I would move the appointment of Barbara Gorson.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Barbara Gorson becomes our representative.
Thank you. And then we also have the City's Library Advisory Committee, and this is a seven-member committee with one council member, and also Barbara Gorson would be, uh, sitting on this committee as the library commissioner, and each council member is to appoint a, a member, and there's also one non-voting ex-officio member, which is the city manager. So, um, you'll see on the list, the applications are Lisa Steingrube and Ariel Gray, Gail Ortiz, David Kramer, Tony Campbell, and I apologize for the misfriend, I had Tom Campbell, it's Tony, and, uh, Pat, how do you pronounce the last name?
DeLeonardo?
DeLeonardo, okay, and so if you'd like to go ahead and make a motion, vote?
I have a, a proposal, because there, this is slightly out of form for the way we usually do things. We need five members on there to make it the full seven-member, uh, board. Usually, the, the council member sitting does not get an appointment, but it gets clumsy. Really, this is a, a straightforward, very altruistic, benign commission. I would suggest, and I would move, that as a council, that we appoint five members, and I would propose Ortiz, Kramer, Steingrube, Campbell, and DeLeonardo as the five members to sit on that board. It is an open meeting, so, um, uh, Ms. Gray can still attend, it's a Brown Act standing committee, uh, but I think that those people, because of their experience on, either on the Library JPA, the Library, um, Ad-Hoc Committee, and I've worked with Tony Campbell for a while on the, um, the Library Modeling Committee, which met twice a week for, you know, 14 weeks, it was just amazing amount of effort, uh, I would propose that those five members be the appointee of the council as a whole.
And would you include yourself as the council member?
I am, I would volunteer as being the council member on that committee.
Is there a second for that, that motion?
No, I, I don't want to second it, but, um...
Well, Doc's seconding it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, so, you second it, so is there...
Oh, under, under discussion, I like...
Under discussion, yeah, absolutely.
I'd like your previous suggestion that, that we, um, that we each appoint someone, and that if you wanted to interview the two people that you didn't have a chance to interview yet, that would be good. I interviewed them both, they're both great.
Yeah, the, the alternate discussion that, that Councilman Harland refers is that at this point, uh, all council members would be allowed to pick one member.
Okay.
And because there's two remaining, uh, and since I pick last, I would interview the, the final two that were not selected and, and choose between those two.
That's fine with me.
So, if you would like to pick a name at this time to...
Well, the, the other option is to go to six, is to expand the committee to six, to one council member.
We've already formed the committee, and I'd rather not go back and reform the committee, we've, we've already voted on this at a previous meeting, so we could always expand it in the future. And again, whoever the odd person out is, the, the committee meetings are open. We, we often get, um, you know, ex-officio members to sit in. It's not the kind of committee where people are counting votes to, to strategize on political movements, it's, it's very straightforward, and I will, uh, appoint Gail Ortiz.
Okay, before you, just for process border, we did have a motion in a second, so do we need to vote on that first, and before we go to the second?
Do a substitute.
You could do a substitute motion. Your steward just made a substitute motion.
And the substitute motion is for us to go back to five appointments by each, one by each council member, and I, I would like to move Gail Ortiz.
Are you, is the second, you, you okay with the second on that?
Yes.
Okay, and so your, your nomination is Gail Ortiz?
My appointment.
And your appointment, Councilmember Norton, your appointment?
I'll, uh, I'll nominate Lisa Steingrube.
Councilmember Harland?
Tony Campbell.
Councilmember Bertrand?
Uh, Dave Kramer.
Okay. And then I, at this point, uh, because, to be fair to the other two people, and because I have no contact with either one of them, I'm gonna interview those two final members and make a selection, and then add them as my choice. Okay, a motion on that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, and the next item is, uh, the Advisory Council of the Area on Aging, and, um, as I mentioned previously, the applicant has, has withdrawn her application, the current representative of the city is Al Carlson, and he's willing to continue on, uh, that board, and Councilmember Harland is the alternate to that board, so there's no voting necessary on that item.
Okay.
And the next one is Art Council for Santa Cruz County. Currently, Councilmember Norton's appointment remains unless another council member, um, wants to be appointed for this position.
You okay with that, office?
Sure.
That remains?
Okay, and the next one is Ambank Association of Monterey Bay Area Governments, and currently the representative is Councilmember Botov, and the, um, alternate is Councilmember Norton, so no action is needed unless one of the council members wants to step down.
I'm fine with that assignment.
Unless someone wants to take my alternate, they could have it.
Make every meeting. I make every meeting.
We'll see about jumping up for that one.
Okay, the next one is the Criminal Justice Council of Santa Cruz County, and Councilmember Termini's appointment remains unless another council member wants to be on this board. And also, uh, City Manager Golson is a representative on this board as well.
Uh, we're fine with that position.
Okay, the next one is Monterey Bay Unified Air Pollution Control District, and currently, Councilmember Termini's a representative, so, um, if he wants to remain on this, uh, board, then no action is necessary.
He accepts that, that position?
Madam clerk, I, I think there's actually a little bit of a nuance here, I believe Councilmember Termini's position on the APCD is actually expiring, so it's gonna be up to the City Selection Committee to nominate...
Oh, yeah, excuse me.
So, the question is, is, uh, if Councilmember Termini wished to continue, it could make sense to have an endorsement from the rest of the council. Uh, I do know that there's interest at the City of Santa Cruz in trying to get the seat as well, so, I, I think if you're interested in continuing serving, maybe potentially endorsement from the rest of the council, so that, uh...
I offer myself up if someone from the city council in Santa Cruz has a burning desire, and the Select Committee nominates them, because it's up to them, really, it's the mayor's.
It is.
Right, so you can push hard for me, and then see what happens.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye?
Okay, thank you, thank you for that correction.
We will endorse you heavily at that meeting.
And the next one is Santa Cruz County Children's Network, and currently, Councilmember Bertrand's representative, and Councilmember Termini's alternate, so that remains the same unless someone would like to step down.
Are you fine with that? Councilmember Bertrand accepts that?
Okay, then we have the Santa Cruz County Flood Control and Water Conservation District for Zone 5. Currently, Councilmember Norton is the representative, and Councilmember Bertrand is the alternate. Would, do you like to see any changes to that?
I believe we have a change here.
Stephanie, I think...
Well, I'm interested in it, but, um, if you want to continue, um...
No, I'm, I'm okay, Stephanie.
He doesn't want to continue.
I'm fine, if you, if you would like it, that's fine.
Are you interested in this position?
I, I defer to Steph because she has more experience.
We're gonna give you first option, would you, uh, sit on the committee?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, you'll remain the alternate.
Yes.
Are we okay with that?
Yep.
Uh, do I need a nomination for that?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you. The next one is Santa Cruz County Library Financing Authority, and currently, Councilmember Termini's a representative, and Councilmember Bertrand is the alternate, so it can remain the same unless someone wants a change.
Now, this is, this is not the Library JPA, this is the Financing Authority, we meet once a year to drop the gavel on where the money goes, it's, it is the, the longest 30-second meeting we have.
Are you fine, remaining?
I'm just fine, I'll do that.
We're fine with that, we can move forward.
Okay. Uh, the next two, uh, boards, the city manager is designated as a city representative by the, um, Library Joint Powers Agreement, and that's the Santa Cruz County Library Facilities Financing Authority, the Joint Powers Board, and the Santa Cruz County Library Joint Powers Board. So, uh, last year, I think, um, Councilmember Termini and Bertrand were representative/alternate, but with the changes, the city manager is the city's representative. Okay, then we have the Santa Cruz County Regional Transportation Commission, and Councilmember Norton is representative, and Councilmember Termini is the alternate, so do you want to remain the same?
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah, that'd be unusual.
Okay, then there's the Santa Cruz County Sanitation District, and, uh, Councilmember Harland's appointment to the city representative remains unless, um, you want to see a change?
She's fine with that assignment?
And, you know, I, I thought I was the alternate on that, and that's been captured?
Um, I checked with them, and they said there's no alternate.
Okay, so there was...
She's the union representative.
And then finally, we have the Oversight Board for the Capitola Successor Agency. Currently, Councilmember Termini is on that board, and we have, uh, the senior planner, Katie Catan, she's also on that board, and I spoke with Katie, and she's fine with continuing her appointment to the Oversight Board, and just want to see if, um, Councilmember Termini wants to remain on the board. Okay, so that concludes the appointments.
That was pretty, uh, pretty swift, you did a great job, Sue, thank you. That concludes all the boards and assignments, everybody's fine with that? We'll move forward to the, uh, consent calendar. This is items usually that are, that are dealt with in one motion, and, uh, right now, we'll take a, a, a motion unless somebody wants to pull one of these items from the agenda.
You'll do it the public first, please.
You can open it to the public for anybody who wants to pull anything from the consent agenda. Seeing no one, we'll bring it back for a motion.
I'll move the two items, item A and B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second by Norton, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, it brings us to, uh, general government, public hearing. Uh, our first item is to receive a special report on special events, highlights, and issues of 2015. Uh, who's doing this? Uh, Chief Escalante is the...
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Rudy Escalante, your chief of police. Uh, every year, as required by Resolution 3202, I provide an end-of-year report of the previous special events that were held through the year, uh, just to call out any potential issues that there might be, and if there's any additional review that the council would like us to do, uh, if there's in identifiable changes in any particular events, uh, then we can start that process as we move into the new year. Uh, just real briefly, special events are divided up into two different categories, there are general events and minor events. Uh, general events are those events that are attended by more than 200 people and have a significant impact to the community, whether it's traffic, uh, or movement within, uh, the village or somewhere around in the area of the city. The other part is the minor events, and those are less than 200 people and generally have fewer impacts to the community. So, in 2015, we had 11 general special events, they were two fewer than the previous year, and we had 14 minor special events, which was three more than 2014. All those minor events that we had were actually new minor events, and they were all held in Espinod Park, uh, which keeps, uh, it's a good opportunity for those type of minor events that we did have, and I listed those in my staff report. Uh, we had several returning events, uh, one of which was the Monte fireworks, uh, we had very few traffic-related issues, uh, from last year, we made some adjustments. We used the similar traffic pattern that we did with the Wharf to Wharf, and that helps. Uh, we also increased our social media presence, trying to notify our residents and visitors of where the road closures would be, how they would occur, and that seemed to work pretty well. Uh, we did get some concerns from the neighbors in the Jewel Box area who discovered some debris on their cars, uh, was probably from the exploding fireworks over the ocean, a lot of that could be weather-dependent on the wind, uh, but I do want to make sure I call that out to you. Uh, we had about 10,000 attendees at that event, uh, similar to what it was the previous year, uh, the event started on time and ended on time, and we had no major, uh, issues with the event. Uh, the Capitola Car Show, we received, uh, two noise complaints, uh, that was fewer than the previous year. Uh, one change that we did make is we brought in the NASCARs, uh, later on in the afternoon, or later on in the morning, rather than early in the morning, uh, we heard those concerns from the neighbors on Monterey Avenue, so we made that adjustment this last year, and that was helpful. Uh, the Mermaid Half Marathon, we've been working with the event organizers, uh, at times, they start the music a little early, and the amplified music carries across the road tracks to the upper village area, and so we are continuing to work with them. Uh, other than that, we really didn't have any issues with any of the events. Uh, we did have, as far as billable hours, I wanted to make sure, uh, to call that out, our Public Works Department does a great job in helping manage these events. Our Public Works Department does a great job in helping manage these events. We had more increased hours for our patrol staff. Some of that had to do with our overall shortages, but we needed to make sure that we had proper coverage. Overall, we had about $13,000 in revenue from billing on the bandstand and again, that's more relative to the fact that we have the new minor events down in the bandstand. We used to have the fee waiver program. Overall, it was a total revenue of approximately $15,000 in revenue from special events, which was down about $1,000 from the previous year. I do want to call attention to the great work that the Chamber does in the Art and Wine Festival. We always work with them and they are very... They really take a lot of action. They are just great to work with. And we were concerned about some alcohol-related issues from the previous year. That's not a reflection on the Art and Wine Festival, but obviously, when you're serving that many people in there, we have alcohol establishments in the village that we're always aware that there's going to be an increased amount of activity. The previous year, we had 12 alcohol-related arrests. This year, the Chamber decided to reduce their hours of operation by one hour and that is a significant revenue generator for them. So for them to compromise with us and work with us to reduce their hours by one hour, I mean, I'm just really, really impressed with how they work and their willingness to work with us. This year, we didn't have any related activity, but they do a terrific job for us and we work hand-in-hand with them and I just really want to thank them for that. They do a great job. For as big as that event is and as many people as it brings into town, to have that few activity, glad this year speaks highly to them and the quality of work that they do. We continue to get concerns from neighbors regarding event fatigue. Again, we did have a couple of fewer general events, but we had more minor events than the previous year, so that still comes into play. We've already had a couple of new requests for general events this next year, so those would have to come to council if it's a general event. It wouldn't be approved until we brought it to you for approval and for any recommendations that you would like to see. But we do continue to have that. Staff increases its usage of social media to try and notify people as to road closures and alternate routes and what to expect. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback that from the community when they are reminded of special events that occur where there are going to be road closures or significant traffic impacts. And so that is the end of my report and I'm ready to accept any recommendations that you would like or try to address any concerns that you might have as we move forward to the 2016 special event season.
Thank you. Any questions for the chief, Stephanie?
Well, just from my perception and from some comments that I've received out in the public, people are concerned about the number of activities that we have and I just wanted a recommendation from you and your department in Public Works at some point, doesn't have to be tonight. Have we reached our max? And I want the council to think about it. Have we reached the number of events that we can support the Police Department and Public Works Department? Because it's a lot of work. I mean, how about that guy that ran up and down the stairs for 24 hours? You know, we have to be there, we have to monitor it, we have to... You know, I mean, we can't just say yes to everything, so at some point, I know Santa Cruz has been dealing with other communities, at some point, if you think we've reached our limit, let us know. If you can't handle any more overtime, if everybody's, you know, maxed out on their work and everything that we're doing, feel free to make us a recommendation to say, "This is about it." We have, you know, these 50 activities this year, whatever, maybe that's about all we, you know, we can have. We can't really staff, you know, too many more or, you know, maybe you can, but I'm just concerned about our staff and all the extra activities. It's a tiny town and tiny staff.
Question for the chief?
I would agree with Councilmember Harland. I think for major events, we have reached the max and, you know, we have to... It's all about balance. The community also needs to realize that a lot of people come to us for a lot of events that you never hear about, that we redline out of hand. You wouldn't believe how many people want to be here and doing interesting and strange things. I think that the minor events, you know, the person running them down the stairs, we're always ready to hear about things like that. I would mention something and I see Mark's here and I'm glad to see him. I am all about your fireworks, I am all in. I think that, you know, we had a great fireworks event for our anniversary and weighing that display with the two displays we've seen from your vendor, the vendor that you use is wonderful, but considerably more aggressive than we find comfortable. And I think we can all remember back a few years, the firework event was paced a little more gently. There was music, but doesn't have to be music, you know, coordinated with it, but it was more paced and I sat next to a photographer who was trying to memorialize the event and he could not take any pictures. Too many, too fast, and he couldn't get a picture of anything because everything was burning out the, you know, the previous photograph. So, you know, just a... And I'm sure we'll talk about that when...
Bring us back, I just wanted to ask any questions of the chief right now.
But as far as the event itself, you know, we have this under control better than fireworks has ever been under control in Capitola for 30 years, so nice job.
I want to open up to the public, but I just want to see if there's any questions of the chief while he's up here. Yeah, a question?
Rudy, how close do you monitor costs in we do events? Are we keeping on top of it by event by event for a year, just by experience and then we go to that?
Yes.
Do you think we have good recovery right now?
We do. It's... Most of the events occur during the busiest time of the year for staff and I know for the Public Works staff, there's just a lot of things that are going on, so it is a significant increased pressure for our capabilities and so we try and monitor as best we can to ensure that we have public safety at the events so that the event attendees and those who are participating in the event are safe and as well as our community. So it does get pressed.
Thank you.
Question?
So you mentioned you've changed some of your procedures, so that suggests to me that you probably have an after-the-event review and you go over what you learned, what you didn't learn compared to the year before, is that true and is that how you function?
We do an after-action report. We try and get information from Public Works, what the pros and the cons were, what the challenges were, and then we do meet with the event organizer as well to go over that.
Okay, thanks.
And again, just to reiterate, that was where the success came with the Chamber, the ability to compromise and identify those concerns and it, for us, it was a win-win and I believe, I know they made some significant compromises in regards to their revenue.
I'm glad to hear that because I do share, Stephanie, and as Mike reiterated, some of the concerns that people here in Capitola have about too many events and the bearing or the load on our staff. So the fact that you're trying to approve each year, that says a lot to me. Thank you.
You have a comment?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page about how this process works. So going forward, this is the annual review, right? And so there's 11 special, general special events, so if there's no significant changes to the events as they get proposed for next year and the council hasn't identified issues where that permit needs to specifically come back to the council, staff would reissue the permits for those 11 unless we get the direction here tonight that one of them should come back. New events do need to come through the council and do get reviewed on an independent basis unless we receive direction tonight that would may say, you know, no new events, of which case we would tell event organizer that that was the city's position.
Except for reviewing the fireworks prior to it happening because it's important for it to come to the council for the date, for our preparation on the wharf or barge, depending on the case may be, and also to discuss the, you know, the MO of the entire event. So except for that one, anyway, I know we have to hear about it from the public, but...
We'll hear from the public and then we'll come back and we'll figure out what we're going to do. No more questions for the chief? Thank you for that presentation, Chief Escalante. So at this point, everybody's clear, we're going to open up to the public for anybody who wants to make a comment on any of the special events or anything related to our events for the upcoming year. Sure, come on up, Richard.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff. My name is Richard Lippi and I've had the good fortune to assist with special events over the last four years and there are two major areas that I believe can be improved to help the, mostly the visitors that come through here. Two areas are traffic, parking direction and advance notice to incoming cars that an event is happening. So let's talk about parking. It's my experience when I go to California International Air Show or when I go to the Santa Cruz County Fairgrounds or if I go to the Oakland Coliseum, when I get into that area, I'm directed where to park and that's a big, that's a big A. We don't have that. We have these big events, we have no parking direction. It's, you know, it's up to all the arriving visitors and, you know, people who don't live here don't have a lay of the land and the major parking is at the two city parking lots and then the neighborhoods. And I came up with a program that I thought would help that. It's, I think I came up with it about a year ago and I just, I would just like the council to consider that if they want to improve their events, the flow. The other one is, I noticed myself, my observation is that a lot of the traffic during events is through traffic. It's not traffic coming to the event. It's people trying to go through the village. And I identified six points outside of the village where we can put notices to just alert people that an event is going on and, you know, to make other choices other than, you know, trying to come through the village. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Richard. You can feel free to submit anything to the city clerk regarding any improvement for that situation. Thank you. Anybody else like to speak?
Hello, my name is Kim Akol and I'm an applicant for a minor event, a new one. Couple of years ago, we had the first full Ironman distance race in the central coast called the Capitola Man and it was at the cement chip. And unfortunately, this last year, the great white sharks took over the cement chip and we can't have another swim there, at least for the next, I'm going to say 10 years because nobody will come. I want to move the swim to Capitola. It's a minor event, it'll be less than 200 people, starts at 7:00 AM, everybody be gone by 9:30. Capitola, I mean, the Capitola actually subcontract's out there guarding their water safety now and to the city of Santa Cruz. This last year, the city of Santa Cruz actually deferred to the state parks for the one triathlon that you guys have here, the Mermaid. So it's not like the city's, the city is not manning that event. In this case, we may need one traffic control person at one point and if that's, if there are no police officers available, I'm sure that I can hire a highway patrol. But I would hope that you wouldn't, you know, turn off the faucet for everybody here. At least this kind of event has a low impact on the city, yet economically has a very positive effect because each person coming to this kind of crazy event stays for three or four days and drops $2,000 to $3,000. So it can have an economic benefit to the city. Again, I would just hope that you don't, you know, you don't ax all the minor events, the new applications.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, would that be considered a minor event or a major event or is that to be determined by when the applicant submits?
Yeah, I don't think I could make the determination based on what I know at this point.
Okay, I thought I just went about it. So you're going to need to file an application and let them make a determination on where that fits in. Thank you for your presentation. Come on up, Tom.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Can I distribute this? Do you have any copy?
I need a copy. Thank you.
So I'm Tom Bradley. I produce two major events in town, the Surfers Path Marathon, Capitola Half Marathon that comes through in May, and then the Surfers Path 10K/5K that takes place in November currently. Reason I wanted to talk tonight is I'm happy with those two events and it's been a joy to work with the city staff on these events and they've been growing annually and they're very successful and I believe I've gotten high marks from the city in terms of production. What I'm proposing is a little bit of a change and it's kind of a two-part change. I'm hoping to add in another major event and so that would be, an application has been turned in, it's for the Surfers Path Hang 10, Hang 5, and that would be an event that would in 2016 replace the Surfers Path 10K/5K. And so what I would propose is to launch that new event in place of that in the fall and then move the 10K/5K that currently is in the fall to February of 2017. So it would be adding a new event ultimately, 2017 moving forward, but it would be in 2016 still producing two events and it just so happens that the Hang 10, Hang 5 has the same street footprint as the 10K/5K does. This Hang 10, Hang 5 has already received approval from the city of Santa Cruz and the Coastal Commission, which took some discussion about the use of a Raina Gulch Park, which is at the very end of the route. And what that does is it, having approval for that one mile, made it possible for me to create a 10-mile, 5-mile that starts and finishes in the village and so the map illustrates that. And it also has received county of Santa Cruz and California Highway Patrol representatives that I've been speaking with that I work with annually have both given it the nod. It would still need to go before their board. The start-finish, as I mentioned, is a similar footprint to the 10K/5K, so the street closures would be the same as well and the timeline would be 5:00 AM to 11:00 AM, which is also similar. So the request I have is the possibility of producing this event, this new event, the Hang 10, Hang 5, that goes along with the Surfers Path theme, it's a 10-mile, 5-mile in the fall on this October date of the 23rd and then in turn, when 2017 rolls around, since I'm one of the 11, you know, major events with two of mine that already exist, just go ahead and grandfather those in, the 10K/5K moving forward in February of 2017. So, yeah.
Tom, you're really confusing us here. So, yeah, the best path is to take it through the process and come back to us with it because we're not going to make a decision about any movement right now, so...
That's fine. I do have an application in.
Okay. I think for clarification, just, you know, there's, what makes it confusing is we're going to try to approve something in 2016 and you're asking for 2017, which makes it a little difficult. And I think the council might be sensitive to substituting one event for another and that's probably something we could deal with because then you would still be utilizing your two events that you've already secured. And my suggestion to you is to ask to do that and then come back in 2017 with a new proposal for that race. I don't know if that gives you the lead time you need to prepare for that, it may not work for you to do that.
Right.
And because of that, but I don't think we're in a position to grant anything for 2017. There may be some consideration to say, okay, if you want to drop one race and put in another race and that's important to you because of your track record, you might get some nods in that, but it is confusing on the presentation. Like I said, we're not in a position to grant 2017.
That's fine. I think that what I had kind of heard is that there's a possibility this spigot might turn off and so I just wanted to present two concepts that I'm currently involved in, which is the possibility of the switch and then another, you know, major event coming onto the docket.
Right. I would need a proposal from someone in the council to substitute and then would that be appropriate at this time to allow a substitution of an event?
We're not agendized to consider any changes in our event schedule. This is just to approve what the chief has brought to us tonight and any additions which I propose, which I will propose, which is the only one that I need to see again, is to review the Monte Foundation. Other than that, nothing new tonight.
Okay.
No changes, no, I mean, we're looking at a very pretty stable police report and that's all we're looking at, I believe. I don't know.
Would that be consistent, only the events that are approved, so we'd have to go through an entire process to make these changes, would have to appeal for those changes for possibly 17, would that be?
So...
If I may, I think the council has it exactly right. If there's going to be a new special event, we'd take the special event application through. If there was a switching one out, event out for another, it seems like that may be received differently by council, but that would be considered in a separate meeting, so that is not on your agenda to consider.
Okay. Okay. The only reason I thought it might be is because my, the 10K/5K that takes place in November is one of the ones that would get approved tonight so that I could come afterwards and discuss the possibility of the change.
I believe based on what the city manager said, that if the events for 2016 are approved, you would be able to come back and request a substitution at a later meeting if we put it on the agenda.
Thank you.
Is that consistent with the city attorney?
That's right.
So that's where we're at. Thanks for your presentation. Anybody else like to speak on the event's schedule? I'll go ahead and close the public forum and bring it back for discussion.
At first, I'd like...
Oh, I'm sorry. Come on up, Mark. I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I just, I didn't know if I was on the agenda or not.
Well, on the agenda, okay.
Your name's being bandied about.
So, any questions, I'd be more than happy to. I think everything's going to be the same. I know that Kim wanted me to just bring up again, if you, if everybody just wanted to leave it on Sunday, everyone was happy with Sunday and not switch it to Saturday. I'm open to whatever all you guys want, it's fine with me. And size of the show's going to stay the same. The amount of money we raised this last year was $37,000, which was a little bit less and it's going to go towards the tennis courts and the only thing Jamie said is talk about where the money would go this year. And I'm once again open to your guys' suggestions as long as, you know, my MO is kids. I had a thought after I talked to Jamie, he had mentioned something about the gymnasium floor and I'd be open for that and I also thought...
I thought of Jim.
Was it a gymnasium floor, right, for... Was it a gymnasium floor, right, for?
I don't think we, I don't think we have a gymnasium floor.
No, for the, for the school. And then, the only thing I thought that, I don't know if you guys run it, um, I thought I would love to help the, uh, junior guards. So, I don't know where that funding comes from, but I would love to have the fireworks show help with the junior guards, and have the Monti logo on their shirts along whatever ever the logo is.
Would you love to build a bathroom in a park?
Well, I'm, you know me, I love to build parks too, so, so that could be open for discussion as well, so-
I think that, I, does that something we can come back and discuss at, at a later time?
I was gonna request that that particular one, when we get closer to the event, that we come back and discuss it as its own agenda item.
So, uh, Mark, I think at this point, you're golden, and I think Councilman Terminy can probably handle your position from here.
Okay, and, um, the barge, when I checked out the cost, it's, it's up there. And, and one more time, it's, I know that, um, the city of Capitola is very gracious to extend those businesses, um, a credit. Fifteen, so for me to, what, what, what you guys are giving them, and the cost of the barge, and that's without even me figuring out transportation and all that, um, the cost of the barge that I was looking at, which would accommodate the show, it, it would be equivalent to you guys giving them 15 years' worth of what you gave them. So, you tell me if that, meaning that I would have to go spend $150,000.
I, I think the barge is sailed, okay, Mark.
All right.
I, I talk about somebody giving us a barge.
Well, I mean, I've been working on that too, to, someone to donate it.
Yeah.
But the only barge I could find that could accommodate the show was $150,000, and that was before I even started cost of transporting the thing.
I believe we have a good fit with you, Mark, and I think we're all happy with, with the product you deliver, so I-
Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Dennis.
Are you okay with the, with us requesting a, a less aggressive pyrotechnic display?
And, and honestly, what that comes down to is, so, they're, the firework company that I deal with, their, their fiscal year, it ends right before our show. And honestly, what, what our show depends on, along with Lake Tahoe, is they're so generous, they give us, they give us the extra shells.
Right.
So, what happened this year, honestly, is there was a lot of extra shells, and-
No, I was there, there were plenty of extra shells.
I mean, we saw, we saw, honestly, a $75,000 show. Well, and it was, and we only paid 30. So, one more time, that's the company donating shells and stuff, so we're actually, I mean, I think it's great, but I understand what you're saying, and I can talk to the guys. We can design whatever, that's the cool thing about it. We can design, you know, I could tell them, you know, don't be so aggressive, you know, a little back. But, I mean, they thought they were doing us a favor.
Pyrotechnic people are their own breed, and I totally understand, and the more things that explode, the happier they think the world is.
The happier they are, I agree.
So, maybe you can get a $30,000 show for only $15,000. We'll talk about it.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, that, one more time, that was them being generous, so-
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, any other questions?
Oh, Dennis has a comment for you.
Um, I, I would suggest that we discuss this, um, sooner rather than later. In other words, I think we should be discussing this next month, both for, for March preparation, but also for our understanding of what we're gonna do. There's a lot of questions still out there that we need to resolve, and so we need to bring this as a community discussion, I, I think, if we can get it in February or early March at the latest.
Mr. City Manager, you have a problem with that?
Uh, no, you know, we, we do like to work out some of the details ahead of time with the special event coordinators, to make sure that, the best special event organizers, to make sure that we have all the details right when we bring it forward. But we've been able to do that, 'cause it seems like usually the details around this event focus on the fireworks themselves, and then some of the questions about what day of the week and things like that. So, we can do that, I think, uh, I don't know offhand where the best slot will fit in, but we can get it in the next couple of months.
Well, just as soon as possible, hopefully by, by March, we can get this on the calendar.
And as far as the ash was concerned, I, I sent my people out there as soon as we got a phone call, which is what I always have done for 20-some-odd years. And my people didn't have anything to clean up. Um, they took pictures, I looked at it, it looked okay, and I think historically that happens, and, you know, I, I can't control which way the wind blows unfortunately. And I think what happens usually is the wind blows out, has blown out, and that night, it was blowing in. And that is really, honestly, in 20-some-odd years of doing fireworks, it's the first time it's happened in Santa Cruz.
I was sitting on the jukebox, and the wind was blowing right at us, and we were covered with that.
Yeah, so it's-
And also, we were getting large pellet stuff, too.
Okay.
So, it, and I understand it's the wind, but those factors have to be taken into account when we're, we're doing this kinda show, so.
The, the pyrotechnic company can design things with slightly higher elevation, there's always things they can do when they hear these concerns. So, it's just a matter of us paying attention to it.
And it is an environmental issue.
Yeah.
It is.
But yet, we've never had an environmental complaint from the Coastal Commission or any of them, right? So, um, that, like I said, that was the first time something like that happened.
Okay.
We'll, we'll bring this back, and just have a conversation as soon as possible. Thanks. Chief, you have comments you wanna make on this?
Yeah.
Come on up.
It's, it's not just a comment. I, I just wanna be cognizant of Mr. Monti's, uh, permit schedule, so that when, if we get this to council, he has enough time to get his applications to Coastal and all that. So, if February and March works-
February works for March, yeah.
This way, he's got enough time to address all the permits that he has to go through, and it's a large process.
Great. Thank you for that input. Appreciate that. So, Mr. City Manager, if we can get that as, uh, uh, February would be great, and I don't know if you can make that happen, but early March would be the, the latest.
Will do.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll bring it back, uh, Councilman Terminy, do you have a-
I would, I would move acceptance of, of the chief's report, and that, uh, the existing events are good to go, that we'll review Mr. Monti's fireworks, uh, February, March, and that, um, you know, the VIPs handle our traffic control, and I think that avenue is the best way for Richard's proposals to go through, and we're always open to it. The chief's an expert, and they can work it out. Um, I appreciate the, any new events, minor or major, but, and I appreciate the economic, um, incentive, but you also have to understand that we cannot sell our city completely, because we live here. So, we, the economic interest is great, it's enticing, but no matter how many thousands of dollars we bring in, we can only sell ourselves to a certain degree, and then we have to just stop. So, again, current program is my motion, with Monti coming back, um, and that's it. And any future ones, come back individually, and we consider.
Second?
Second by Harlan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Great, that'll take us to the next item. This is, we're gonna receive a presentation from the SoCal Water District, uh, Dr. Bruce Daniels, present in the building. Hello, Bruce.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Um, thanks for this opportunity to come and have, hopefully, a conversation with you about water, and what it means to the city, and vice versa. Um, I wanna start off by thanking the council for all the help they have given the Water District, allowing us to use these chambers for our meetings now. Um, Katie Cuthane came to one of our meetings to talk about planning versus water. Jamie came to a, a meeting just last week about our plans for groundwater replenishment, um, McGregor property, which we've now put a pump station in to allow our district to be coordinated. Um, and basically, we have a problem, and a problem, I think, affects you, so we have a vested interest in working together and coming up with solutions that we can hopefully, you know, all live with. Um, so, we are a private, a nonprofit, sorry, public nonprofit government agency. Uh, we supply water to about 40,000 people. We have about 45 employees who do that, so almost 1,000 people per employee, which is a pretty good ratio. And, but we have a problem. The problem is we have overdrafted. And so, that's a picture of a kind of, you know, we have this big community, and we're trying to serve them and protect their water supply. And, uh, we have the 45 employees I, I mentioned. So, let's talk about the problem. The problem is, way back in the early 80s, we crossed a line, that dashed line you see there is safe yield. If we pump less than that, evidence is fine, and we start pumping more than that, we start taking more out of the ground than soaks in. And it happened in the early 80s, and you see, it's, it went way up. And so, over those years, and we just, a couple of years ago, finally got below that line, um, we've had accumulated a 28,000 acre-foot deficit. That's as much water as we use in seven years. So, it's an incredible deficit. One thing you can notice there is that the line has started to curve down. We've now done some studies, and we believe that the groundwater recharge, the amount of safe yield, is actually gonna be going down in the future. In fact, already has started down, which makes it difficult, because it means you could be at a place where used to, it was fine, but now it's not fine anymore. So, every, everyone knows what a deficit for a bank account means. Let me show you what it means for us. That pink area there, around Aptos, is, uh, all under sea level. So, if you were to put a well there, you'd have to go below sea level before you would find any water. And you notice there are rings there, and in the center of the ring, it's 70 feet below sea level. So, basically, you dug a, dug a giant hole in the ground. And the scary thing about this is that our hydrologist has said, and I completely agree with him, that once we see seawater right there at the coast, because of this big hole we've dug, in two years, it'll be at that center. And you notice the yellow dots there? Five of our production wells are in that area. So, we would lose a considerable amount of our supply right there. And it's difficult, because our prediction is that it's gonna take us seven years at the very earliest before we can get a supplemental supply to start fixing this, and, uh, that means that we have a scary time ahead of us. So, what this accomplishes is that it, uh, causes saltwater intrusion. And this is not something theoretical or way off in the future. Those red dots there are all active saltwater intrusion. You can see over to the east, we have four big red dots, and, and over in the west, it's not actually in our district, but it's close to it. The city has wells there, and they're showing saltwater intrusion. So, there have been times in the past that we thought or hoped that the saltwater was way off the coast, but we can't go with that assumption anymore. We don't know how far off it is. It could be 100 feet off the shore, or 500, or half a mile, but it's not way, way out there. So, it is, it is definitely there, and with these depressions, it's approaching slowly towards the, the coast. So, what we need to do is, we need to repay our loan that we made back in the 80s and 90s. We need to replace back into the ground the same amount of water that we took out. So, we took out 28,000 acre-feet of deficit, we need to put 28,000 acre-feet back into the ground. That would bring water levels up high enough that our basin would be protected against saltwater intrusion. And without that, it'll just keep happening. So, what we need to do, our projected water demand is 3,800 acre-feet, and we can only safely pump 2,300. So, that means we need to find 1,500 acre-feet of additional supply every year, probably for, forever. That means that 40% of our water supply needs to be replaced somehow. There are a number of schemes we're looking at, most active one, the one that's under our control, there's two others that are under control by others, that we're also looking at. But the one that we have some control over, and therefore it's our preferential supply option right now, is groundwater replenishment. We take, um, sewage water and basically purify it, so it's essentially like distilled water, and then we put that back in the ground and replace, uh, what's there, and that provides us some additional supply. And this is an area where we can have help from you. We are looking now for a place, a location, where we can put that, that plant to do the purification, and some of the options being considered are in Capitola. So, we would need your help in consideration. Another issue, um, we have a state mandate to supply water. We are not a land-use management or planning agency. That's the function you provide. We are just here to supply water, but it means you need to have water to be able to supply water. And of course, a lot of folks have asked, well, you know, how do you supply water for new development when you clearly have a deficit? And, uh, in fact, uh, the state has recently, um, mandated that our basin is critically overdrafted. We're a member of, just a few in the entire state, that is critically overdrafted. And the problem is, you need to have enough offsets to accomplish the water demand you have. We started doing water offsets back in 2003, and the plan was we'd do that for about five, six years, and we have a supplemental supply. Now, here we is, you know, 12 years later, still no supplemental supply, and our plans are, if we worked hard, we can have a supply running in seven years. But then it needs to run for 20 years to actually accomplish that restoration of the basin. So, we have 27 years of, of threat, basically. If that saltwater reaches the shore in that time, um, it's really bad news. So, that is why you've probably seen we're very tight-wad about, you know, water usage, and very intense about it, because, as I've told the county when we gave this presentation to them, if you make a mistake and overdevelop a little bit, the traffic will be a little bit high, and, and schools may be a little bit crowded. If we make a mistake, the entire water supply for this area is gone. Once we get saltwater invading our, our aqua for, and basically polluting our wells, it's essentially permanent. And, and the other, second problem is we've been doing these water demand offsets for 12 years, and we basically are running out of offsets. When we started this project, 85% of the toilets in our district were three and a half or six, or five-gallon toilets. That's down to maybe 2% or 3% now. We've basically done such a good job of conservation that we've exhausted a lot of the potential. So, right now, we need the equivalent of offsets for 200 homes each year, and we basically have zero credits for new demand right now. So, the other thing we need some help for, thinking, helping, is mechanisms by which we can get some kind of additional supply for the next seven years until we can get a supplemental supply. Otherwise, we're gonna have to make some decisions about how to do, deal with this. We are, we're loathe to start handing out water without an offset, 'cause that means that will just increase the deficit that much faster. The district has not had a decision about this, but that's what we're facing now. So, some of the things we're thinking about is doing stormwater capture, and then planning it up and pumping it into the ground or putting it in spreading basins. And so, that's an area where we could certainly have the city's help in doing some of that. So, these are the two areas where we really need your help, and if we don't have success here, I think all of us are gonna loathe the day that, you know, this has gone downhill. So, it's the supplemental supply, the purified water, collaboration on the sources, and the sites for that facility, and then identifying offset projects. So, we all need to put our thinking caps on. So, for the district, thank you.
All right. Any questions, sir? Stephanie, go ahead.
Have you looked at the former Par 3 golf course on the other side of the freeway? That's zoned for parkland. I'm not sure that's big enough for you, but that's a big vacant piece of land that's, nothing's happening with.
Mm-hmm.
And did you look at that part, piece of land? Could that work?
Look in it for what?
For your facility.
Um, we've, we've looked at places all over. Um, that's a possibility, I suppose. Uh, it's, the, the issue is that it's far away, so, you know, the further away you get from the, the sewage pipes, the more expensive it is. Um, but, you know, we're looking at all places. We've, we've looked at Cabrillo and, uh, possibility there. We've looked at some places even not in the district, in the Live Oak area. So, we're looking at all sorts of areas. But one of the active sites we're looking at is in Capitola. So, that would, you know, certainly require your, uh, forbearance if, uh, if that turns out to be one of the best ones.
Yeah, just a couple of, Bruce, you mentioned seven years. What is the, what is the, uh, Water District now planning or looking at as alternative water sources or, or reclamation? What is it doing that plans to be able to solve this in seven years?
The ones, as I mentioned, are three possibilities. The city of Santa Cruz has this scheme they've just come out with, you know, the last few months, which talks about water transfers. So, they would transfer us water in the winter when they have it, and, uh, we would So they would transfer us water in the winter when they have it, and we would use that in our basin instead of pumping. They're looking at a five-year study plan, basically, before they would even be ready to negotiate terms for that. So that's not happening any day soon. And in particular, it's their responsibility to push that. That's their project, not ours. So it's out of our control. It might eventually get to a point where, you know, that could be a viable alternative. Right now, you know, we're just watching. And the other one is the Deepwater Desal project down in Moss Landing. And again, that's not under our control. That's a private company that's doing that. And so if that were to happen timely fashion, yeah, we could decide to do that. It would require a heck of a pipeline. We'd have to have a pipeline going from here all the way down to Moss Landing, you know, yea thick. And so that would be expensive and difficult. You'd be crossing how many hundreds of properties and having to get rights to them. And so it would be an incredible project, and it wouldn't be cheap. But that's another possibility. So those are the two others that we're actively looking at, but we have no control over. The only one we have control over right now is this advanced purified water project. We're actively looking with the county on that project.
You have an intertie agreement with Santa Cruz. Is that you're going to start to use that with the north coast rivers?
Yeah, that's, it's really not a supplemental supply because it's so small. It's only three hundred acre feet, if you can get it. For example, I know that they're busy now trying to fill up their reservoir, but if they don't get it filled up by the spring, we won't get any water at all. So even though we may get a lot of rain this year, until their reservoir gets completely filled and starts spilling, we don't get anything. So even...
Any thought of using that agreement before? Because apparently that agreement's been around for years, that this intertie, that agreement with Santa Cruz.
Yeah, we have the intertie.
Right. But we haven't taken any water yet.
The problem is, the city has water rights to the river, the San Lorenzo River. But their water right says you can't give it to anybody else, nor in fact can you store it in the ground. So you have to use it and drink it. And that would require that water right to be at least amended. And the city has said they're not very interested in amending their water right because of all the fish issues that they have. So we would have to go and apply for a new water right. And you have to do an EIR to even apply to that. And until this all gets worked out, we could have a water right, but, you know, we would need to use their facilities to do this. So there's all this coordination and negotiation and studies. And then at the end of the day, we'd need to figure out, how much water can we actually get from that with climate change? And the drought we just had was incredible. It was a record-setting drought, the worst drought in twelve hundred years. And we may be getting more of those. So we could do this, all this negotiation and get all these water rights and find out there's just not much water there to spare. Because they would certainly take their share of the water first, and then we only get something that's excess. And dry years, there may not be any excess. So it's a little scary going down that road because it's not drought-proof. Whereas our purified water is drought-proof.
Thank you. Councilor Turner, you had a question?
A couple of things, just so I digest this. Twenty thousand milligrams per liter of salt intrusion in the largest well on the coast? I think it's something like that. Yep. That's staggering. It's basically seawater. Yeah, it's about two-thirds of the way to seawater.
You folks are the kings of offsets. You have managed to reduce your pumping year after year, which is phenomenal, in spite of any development, in spite of the population staying relatively stable, but still development going on. Where do you go from here if we're causing any developer or anyone to build to offset by one and a half times or two times what they anticipate using? That seems like a perfect scenario to continue on. I don't care if it continues on for forty years. Technology gets better. What do we do as a city? And what sort of regulations do we do to help you? Do we require gray water systems in every home? Do we, I mean, you can only do so much with a rain barrel. Because if it doesn't rain, your barrel's empty. We can only do so much with rainfall recharge because you and I both know, most of that rainfall if it's close to the coast, we donate to the ocean.
Yes.
So what do we do with our land use management plan?
We've carried that program about as far as it goes. And the program is multifaceted. So if you're building just a home, there's a certain amount. But we have a gold standard and a platinum standard. So for example, if you put in cisterns to collect rainwater off the roof, or if you put in gray water, we give you some extra credit and the amount you have to offset is less. And now almost all the homes are going at least gold, and many of them are going platinum, to try and reduce the amount that they have to offset. And we've kind of taken the program over because two years ago, developers were coming to us and saying, I've gone around this entire neighborhood, knocked on every door and asked people, can I offset the, can I buy you a new toilet? And people, most of them didn't have those toilets, and those few that did didn't want to be bothered if someone's traipsing in their house, I guess, and replacing a toilet. So basically, developers asked us, you know, let's do something else because we cannot find toilets to offset.
Well, we know that we don't go any further than seeing your will serve letter. If we don't see that, they don't get a building permit, period.
That's all right.
And I guess my question to you is, besides recharging the wells that are having saltwater intrusion, what can we do to help you? You've alluded to the city of Capitola needs to help here and there. And like I said, no one has been better stewards of a water supply than SoCal Creek. And I almost hesitate to use this word, but have you contemplated the other water districts in the surrounding area doing any kind of consolidation?
Well, we can consolidate, but, you know, the city has problems, you know, as big as bigger than ours. And certainly Paharo is, you know, makes our problems look simple. They've got active saltwater intrusion up to three miles inland now. And, you know, for us, we have some of our monitoring wells along the coast, no production wells right now. But, you know, it's out there. And we've taken back the water demand offset program. Now we are collecting money from developers. And one of the things we did is we built and bought a, what's called no DES machine. Every year, we have to flush some of our lines, as required, to get sediments out of the lines. In the past, we just flushed it out to the hydrants and out into the street and let it go down the storm drains. But of course, that's a crazy thing to do. So now we have a machine, it costs us $300,000. So we can open the hydrant, put the water into this machine, which will then pump it back into another hydrant, so the water isn't lost. And so we use some of that offset money to buy that because it saves water. But you can only do that once. So we need to find innovative new schemes. Professor Andy Fisher from the university is coming to our meeting Tuesday night to talk about some planning he's been doing about taking stormwater and doing something active with it, like putting it into the ground. And if we can do something like that, then we can come up with more offsets.
It certainly seems easier than trying to purify sewage, you know, threefold and pumping it in. There's not much mechanism to collecting and pumping back in stormwater that's already arguably clean enough to drink.
Well, most stormwater is not because it's going down the street. So it's picking up oils and dust from breaks and asbestos. And it's pretty foul stuff by the time it gets down the street into the storm drain. If you collected it off people's roofs, maybe, but that would be a great infrastructure, having to go around to every roof in the community and install some device. And some people wouldn't want you to do it. So it'd be every fifth home or tenth home. I mean, it's worth considering, but we haven't thought that would be very viable. And, you know, we need fifteen hundred acre feet. That's five hundred million gallons every single year. And it's difficult to think that we could do that on stormwater. We can certainly perhaps get enough to be able to allow development to continue. That's what we're trying to do now, is to get some kind of a scheme working so that we can have enough offsets to allow development to continue. Otherwise, we're between a rock and a hard place.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilor.
We have this wonderful thirty-two mile lineal uninterrupted piece of land between Davenport to Paharo. If you were going to do a transmission line, it seems to me that my ideal place would be to use that corridor, Indian Pacific corridor. And I don't know if it sits inland enough to actually work as a recharge area, but the possibility of using Nury's Lagoon, which is almost adjacent to that, using Nury's Lagoon and using that use that corridor as a ground recharge area, may be some of the answer. It could come both ways. You could also work that backwards, coming from Moss Landing if you get...
The recharge area is very complicated. By state law, you have to be able to guarantee that when you inject stuff into the ground, it stays there for at least two months. So it means you can't have any private wells anywhere in the neighborhood. So we need to find chunks of space, and one of them was the Blue Ball Park, where there's no other people. And it's amazing, you walk around the community and find out how many people actually have private wells. Sometimes it's just something in the backyard they use for irrigation, but still, that would count. So finding a location where you can actually do the injection is not easy.
Is there a certain distance that you have to be from the coastline to be able to do it?
No, that's not the issue. The issue is that you need to be able to guarantee you have enough distance so that it's not going to be...
I think my point is, Bruce, is that, is that right now, there's already plans going forward for taking that corridor and doing a bicycle pedestrian trail, at least at first. And the idea, once it's developed, we don't have that access.
We're having the transportation commissioner come Tuesday night as well. Because if we were to put the plant at the treatment plant in Santa Cruz, then we would use that line to ring the pipe back. So, yeah, we would use that. So we're thinking a different way. And you're right, if we use the Desal plant down in Moss Landing, we would probably want to use some of that corridor for that pipe, too.
What's the thought about that Desal plant? Is it going to get permitted, do you think? And ever built? Or does it look like a huge lawn shot?
They're in the middle of doing an EIR. They've been quite honest with us, is that their main purpose in doing this is to have a data center. They're going to use the water for cooling the data center, which gives them great advantage. And they would build a Desal plant if there's enough customers. And the biggest customer now is the city of Salinas. So might they back out? Maybe. I don't know. So they're not going to build it for us. We're too small for that. So we're going to have to leverage some other users coming onboard to make that happen.
Are they going to use some of it for agriculture?
I don't know what their, I think their plans are just for growth, but I don't, we have not looked into that. It's difficult for agriculture. I don't see that being used because it's very expensive compared to just pumping it out of the ground. And even, you know, that way, it has a little bit of salt in it, and many crops are very sensitive to even minuscule amounts of salt.
Councilor, any question?
You know, I'm not in your field, but I did hear you just say that there are a lot of people, or a certain number, you didn't say a lot, actually, that have their own private wells and they just use it for, I guess, household use, irrigation. I'm not too sure what the, I just don't know what the inventory is. But I've gone to a stakeholder meeting, and I know that you are very concerned about, several stakeholder meetings, actually. I know you're very concerned about the draw that private well owners have. And I also know that if you do have a private well, it's not a cheap thing. There could be recasing the electricity to run it.
Absolutely.
So is there an opportunity to buy out some private wells and put them on the system so that maybe you could get an advantage? They're using perhaps more water than they would, they're using more water than they would if they were on the actual SoCal Water District system. So you might get some benefit. It's just a thought.
We've been doing something like that for like a decade. We have very special things to entice people because we know that if they're part of our system, we can control it more. If they're doing a private well, they can pump as much as they want, and we have no control over whatsoever.
So, okay, you've been doing it, so I guess there's incentives for that?
We have incentives to add people to our system. And of course, someone five miles up in the hills is still drawing water, but there's no way we could draw, put a line all the way up to their house. So there's limits to what we can do. They have to be close enough to our existing distribution system to make it economically worthwhile.
Okay. Maybe I'm the only one not in the know here, but you're coming here to the city of Capitola, and you're looking for a place to do water injection, I gather, or a facility so that eventually you could do water. What places are you thinking of at this time?
Your city manager was our meeting on Friday. It was not a public session, so I will let him tell you if he wants to. But a number of places we've bandied about here in the city where it might make sense. Because, you know, the sewage basically starts in seascapes and comes this way. And so the further you are farther away from seaside, the more water you have because, you know, they all come into the line. And so this is just about as, you know, Forty First is our boundary. We could actually even go further than that. But, you know, here in Capitola is a good place to put a plant because we get more water to make use of.
We're talking about a sewage treatment plant?
It's kind of that way. It takes stuff out of the pipe and basically keeps the water and puts everything else back in the pipe.
Right.
So it still goes to the city of Santa Cruz for treatment and pushed out into the ocean, et cetera. There's less of it pushed out into the ocean. And then we would then just basically have essentially distilled water, which we'd use to inject.
Is, like, the facility at Nob Hill is largely buried. I think I did a tour. It goes two stories down or more. I'm not quite sure. Would this have to all be above ground? Would it be buried? Would it be visual impact on the local neighborhoods?
Well, there's two parts to it. One is the plant where we'd actually do this operation. And that would be just a building, probably, a couple of buildings. And, you know, it could be, you could put walls around it and landscape it and put plants on it and around it. So it would be modern like the Nob Hill Shopping Center in that regard.
How much square footage?
I don't remember. It's, I don't have the number at the top. And it's simply like an acre is what you'd need, that amount of land for the various parts to it. And then the second part is we'd need an injection. So that would be a well. And, you know, that's just a small little building. You've got one over here in the Jill Box, for example.
Right.
And you'd need three of those somewhere in the district.
Okay, I can see how the sites would be fairly sensitive. So I'll defer to other discussions on that.
Yeah.
How many sites, actually?
We would need one plant, one treatment.
How many sites are reasonable within the city limits of Capitola, or are proposed?
We're not planning any injection sites in Capitola. We're thinking about this treatment facility.
Okay, only one site?
One site.
Okay. I mean, are there more than one possibilities? That's what I'm trying to get...
Yes, there's several. We're looking at them. And so half dozen in a district.
Okay.
One of them we're looking at is in the Cabrillo area.
Okay. I want to know, as a member of the public, what is the worst-case scenario? So you don't get something built. I understand the transfer pipe is very small. I understand that. What are you left up to? I'm not trying to do a doomsday thing, but I want to understand what we're looking at.
Well, if we do nothing, everyone, all the hydrologists, all the scientists, say it's obvious you'll get saltwater intrusion. I mean, we basically have this ramp, and the saltwater's being drawn down that ramp, and...
But I mean, how many years before, I mean, my little salt system that I have, you're giving me saltwater already or something of that stuff?
That is the scary thing. We don't know. And even finding out would be incredibly difficult. We would have to bring in deep-sea drilling wells and drill holes down into the bay. And even then, whether you could find out or not, because in drilling a hole, the saltwater would tend to go down the hole along with the pipe, which means you'd definitely find saltwater, but it's not. So we don't know, as I said, we don't know how far it is off the shore. If it's a hundred feet, we could see it next year. If it's five hundred feet, you know, maybe ten years. If it's, you know, and without knowing where it is, we, that would help us immensely if we knew. We have thirty-five years to fix the problem. We could relax and work hard at fixing the problem, but we know, you know, when that needs to happen. The scary thing is, we could see saltwater intrusion in Aptos, and then it would get into production wells, you know, two or three years from now. And that's so short that there's nothing we could do to fix it.
So Locklomen gets its water from San Lorenzo Valley. SoCal Creek's off the list for doing any reclamation off of that during the...
Water rights. They have the right to collect water up in the hills and put it in that reservoir. They have various things they have to do. The water right requires it only to be used in the city and in Scotts Valley. And we have no rights to it, so we'd have to get water right. Again, all these negotiations, you have to do an EIR, we have to probably do some kind of pipeline here from there.
And SoCal Creek is not viable, no water rights, no possibility?
It's possible. That's something we would definitely try. The difficulty with all those, if you look at the city's plan... The difficulty with all those, if you look at the city's plan, the problem they have is that their supply is very vulnerable to climate change.
Right.
So when you have a drought, there isn't much water in the river, and so they're really up a creek. In fact, they literally are. They then take all their water out of the reservoir and it goes down, down, down. And so we can invest a huge amount of effort into getting the water right for SoCal Creek, but then with climate change, and I do have a presentation I've given to all the water districts in the county about climate change and water. If you'd like, I'd be glad to show any of you privately or all you together, but let me give you just one little piece of this. Three climate scientists have made a study, got it published, and they say that in the last half of the century, there's greater than an 80% chance of more than a 35-year drought, which is gonna be a mega drought, twice as extreme as seen in the last thousand years. And even if that's half true, it's frightening. So, you know, SoCal Creek could be permanently dried by, you know, the next 40 years. It could. And that, that means you'd have water rights to something that's dry. So investing a lot of effort in there. If we became desperate, we'd try, but right now, that doesn't look like a very safe way to go. Even this year, it got down, there was a couple of days when there was no water in the creek, no water flowing in the creek.
Well, I thank you for your presentation and your candor, and I think we all understand the magnitude of this situation, and I appreciate your presentation. We may invite you back for another presentation. I'd just like to see if there's anybody from the public that would like to weigh in on this discussion.
Sure.
Is there anybody in the public that has any comments about the water situation? Okay, great. Oh, come on up, please.
Hi, I'm Barbara Graves, I live in Capitola. I'm a water advocate. I think you all know that I know Bruce. But as an activist, I can say things that maybe a director of a water district can't. So I wanna emphasize how much I need my city right now. We're pretty much out of options. The city of Santa Cruz took the best option, which was desalinization. We put $5 million in 10 years into that project. And they axed it. The city of Santa Cruz did that. Tonight, as we're all here discussing our district's problem, members of the water committee from the city of Santa Cruz are organizing an event in Aptos to oppose recycled water, because they want us to go for water transfers. Now let me tell you just a teensy bit about water transfers. Yes, we have a switch, but their water supply, as Bruce pointed out, is iffy. They wanna charge us for it. Let me tell you how much they wanna charge us. You can go down to Nob Hill tonight and buy bottled water that is cheaper than what the city of Santa Cruz wants to charge us for water. We had an outfall for brine for desalinization, even if we did it in our own city, set for the city of Santa Cruz, and they axed it through ballot measure. They're opposed to any project. If we don't do it here, if we don't do it in our own district, we're not gonna get a solution to this problem. We've really gotta do it ourselves. And we, the biggest draw to the west of our district was the Belts Wells, owned and operated by the city of Santa Cruz. They drew us into saltwater intrusion at the Belts Wells. So our district moved all the wells inland, and what did they do? They finally moved their Belts Wells inland right next to ours. They're within like, I don't know, 100 yards or something. So they're creating an even greater cone of depression than they did when they were at the Belts Wells. I mean, if we're gonna solve this problem, it has to be here, and I need my city's help.
Barbara, thank you for those comments, and Dr. Daniels, thank you for your comments. Okay, this is a presentation, so this is for information, and obviously, we're gonna have more discussion on this, and I appreciate that you, that you try to relate to everybody and the citizens of Capitola, this is a serious situation, and we're gonna have to make some tough decisions about it moving forward. So thank you for those comments. So that's just a recommendation. We'll move on to the next item. This is item C, Stockton Avenue and Espinon intersection improvement project contract We knew you'd be back.
Dropped everything on the way up. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item before you is awarding a contract for the construction of the Stockton and Espinon intersection improvements. These improvements will replace sidewalk right at that intersection and formally move the two side, crosswalks that are currently on Stockton Avenue into one sidewalk. The city received five bids for the project. The low bid was Anderson Pacific out of Santa Clara. They've done quite a bit of local projects for the Santa Cruz County Sanitation District. I've worked with them in the past, they're a very good company. Their bid was in the amount of $223,928. Unfortunately, that's about $50,000 more than we estimated it would cost. Seems like we need to significantly increase our estimates right now. Prices are doing nothing but going up. I don't think rebidding it, changing the scope of the work would get us a better project, is my recommendation that we move forward with this time. Anderson Pacific's ready to make sure we get it done before we get near the summer. So recommendation is that we take the additional money we need from the Clare Street project at this point, which is, we're waiting for a sanitation district project to get done, we'll be able to ref, put that money back into that project in the next budget cycle.
Great. Any questions for Mr.? Go ahead.
Have they made any commitment when they would wanna start, Steve?
They wanna get some, there's two items, the streetlight and tree grates that have about a four-week lead item. I'm gonna call them tomorrow, they're gonna get those on order, and at that time, we'll get the contracts in place, and so hopefully, within a month, they'll be starting.
Within a month, okay.
Steve, how many streetlights total are on this project?
We're adding one.
Only one?
Yeah, only one. There's one already on Margaritaville side, and there's one across Espinon on there, and we are adding one in front of what Armida Winery, I believe it is.
Why is it so dark in there, Steve? If there's two lights sitting there now, it's always dark in that intersection.
I think, well, my personal opinion is that there's plenty of light along the Espinon. I think it's just dark on the, this side of Stockton, and that's why we're adding the one right by the crosswalk there to illuminate that crosswalk.
Did we not also talk about one on the other side of Stockton Bridge at some point?
On the other side?
The next crosswalk at the Venetian?
We may have talked about it. It's certainly not part of this project. I could try and add it in if you'd like me to.
It'd be nice to know what it would cost while we're mobilized, only because we've spoken about that intersection being really dark, and even darker than the one crossing to the Espinon.
Maybe it'll be bright with those new LED lights, and we'll get complaints from people about it being too bright.
Well, I count on complaints, you know, I mean, it's just part of the job.
I'd be happy to look into that.
Okay. Any other questions? Open up for the public, anybody have a comment on this Stockton Avenue redo? I'll bring it back.
I'll move, I'll move item C.
Second, oh. I just have, any additional comments?
No.
I just have one comment about, I know that we're anxious to get this project done, and even though we did move forward with the Vice project, and I know you're anxious to get this project done, I'm not so intent on tearing up that intersection based on the weather that we're assuming that we're gonna get. I, I think that if they're ready to mobilize and order, and this project were to start around April, would probably be better for us and longer than trying to, I noticed in your comments, you said we could start in February, and I don't know that that's, that we want that torn up to degree.
Never wait for the weather. If you wait for the weather, you don't get something built.
You know, waiting for the weather might not be prudent, but in the midst of an El Nino year, when we've had indicators that where we're going, and I, and I can tell you right now that I've been out there every day with the crews on Vice, working on that pipe, and Steve, maybe you could validate this, that when the rain comes, the construction comes to a screeching halt, and it may make it worse, and, and believe me, nobody wants this project done more than me, but I think just prudent monitoring of the weather and not trying to force this job. I mean, we can all wait out, see how the weather determines, is my only advice.
I'm sorry, I think we have, we got a chance to go right now. We waited a year and a half for this, we gotta go for it. You pushing it, we're also, we're into Easter week, then we got, then we got the population problem coming through there. We think, there's not a huge amount of excavation on this project. So, so as far as surfaces, we're not, besides the curbs and sidewalks, there's not a lot of changes, are there, Steve? Is street grade changed though?
There are some, yeah, but that's just paving, grinding down the existing pavement. We're not excavating like we are on the Vice train, we're not doing any subsurface work. You know, let me talk to the contractor, we'll see, you know, if they can, if we can certainly, I'd like to start earlier, the better, but we need to figure out a good way that if we do get, you know, a couple of days of rain, that we don't cause a three-week delay in the project. So I think we can work that out with the contractor.
I think they all are gonna, you know, understand, I mean, when, if the weather is good, they can knock that project probably out in two or three weeks, and if, and if we open it up and create an abomination, I mean, I, I think we've had indicators that we have weather coming, and it's a serious situation, so Dennis, believe me, I, I know this project is a year and a half behind, but February's a tough month to do construction in.
I've been in this business for 30 years, and I know construction. So you do it when you can.
Go ahead, yeah, Councilor.
Obviously, to me, what does the contractor say about weather considerations? I'm sure they've thought about it in your discussion.
So I haven't had that conversation with this contractor. There are provisions in our contracts with them for weather delays, and, you know, because we charge them, there's something, working days permitted in the contract, and then those days are extended if we have weather delays and things like that. Haven't had the conversation with them about, you know, if we get a week's worth of rain and how that would impact their, if that would have a negative impact besides just not being able to work in those days yet.
Well, those are what ifs. I'm, yeah, I'm concerned about what Dennis is saying also. Excuse me, what Ed is saying, obviously. So if it makes the job much worse, maybe we should wait. I don't wanna wait, but if you haven't had that discussion, I'd kinda like to know what the expert would say.
Well, I can have that discussion and come back to the council, or, you know, talk to you guys offline through the Friday reports or something, let you know what his concerns are with the weather, and get back to you.
There's a motion, a second, I have to call the question. There's a motion, the second was by, who? Stephanie, Stephanie on the second? Okay, so there's a motion on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. That'll take us to the next item, which is the resident-initiated community visioning process.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. As you recall, last fall, a group of civic-minded residents led by Gail Ortiz introduced an item to initiate a community-initiated grassroots visioning process. Since that time, we've worked with the group, they've refined their proposal, and they are requesting simply in-kind and technical support services from the city, use of facilities to minor reproduction services. The intent of it would be to have two to three workshops, where they would engage the community, talk to them about their values, priorities, so that they could better inform city decision-makers on the community's expectations. So with that, I would like to introduce Gail, who can talk a little bit more about her proposal.
Hello again, Gail.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff. Thank you, Rich, you've done a great job, I appreciate all your help, and Jamie, too. So you remember, we came asking for money, now we're just asking for in-kind. We wanna keep this thing really simple. We're trying to keep this, I hate to say the word grassroots, because a lot of times it has a negative connotation. We're trying to keep this thing a homegrown event, something that we wanna get a lot of people involved in. We wanna get people we don't know, people we know, people from every neighborhood, people who have differing opinions than we do. I, I think Rich said we wanna talk to people about what they love about Capitola. We don't wanna talk to people about what they love about Capitola, we just wanna hear what they love about Capitola. What we're trying to do is to get a picture of what this community loves about where we live, what they cherish about it, what's, what's good about it. We're trying to keep this thing really positive. We don't have an agenda, none of us, no, no one involved in this that I've heard has got any idea what's really gonna come out of this. We wanna know what people think. And as you'll recall, this idea came to me after the June 23rd meeting, where we talked about the city hall complex. And even though that was a difficult meeting, and it was, it was more of a negative meeting in a lot of ways, what it did for me was it, it showed me how much people love Capitola, and how much they wanna talk about Capitola, and how much they wanna talk about how much they love Capitola. And so I wanna give that forum for people, to be able to get up and say, I love this community because, you know, not just I can go to the beach, but because we've got the best police department that you could possibly imagine, because we've got, you know, all these different things that we've got. And then we start talking about what are our values and what do we wanna see for the future, and just find out. We wanna, we wanna introduce more people to the general plan, and show them what was in the general plan, so that they are acquainted with it, and they understand. I think people who see the general plan are surprised to see how many things are covered in it. And we wanna introduce more people to the main principles of the general plan, and hear anything else that we might have missed in the general plan. We're not, we're gonna present it to the council, but it's not with any agenda about thinking you need to do anything about it. It's just, it's gonna be a snapshot for you folks, and for all of us, to see what we all think. And I'm hoping it's something that could last throughout the years. I'm hoping somebody else might take it on throughout the years, but maybe we could do it once a year. You know, it's like a town hall meeting kind of thing. And I'm open for any questions.
Any questions?
I just, I have a, a comment with this process, Gail. I'm in support of what you're doing, start with that. I really take back to anyone that criticizes the general plan process, the city spent a million dollars on that process. It was a committee involvement all the way through. If people chose not to go to the meetings, that was their choice. I went to almost every one of the meetings, I'm a councilor, and all the time as a council member, I went to every one of those meetings. Why? Because I cared about Capitola. They were, they were properly announced, and that was really the time that this, this whole, what you're suggesting now, should have been integrated into that process. When we had a process where we're making decisions about the future of the city, and what we're gonna do, and even before setting priorities, it should have been done in that process. So anyone that comes to me and says that the general plan process wasn't there, they don't know what they're talking about. It's, it's, you know, not that everyone agrees on what happens in that, in that general plan, but we did agree to it as a community, both as a city council, as a planning commission, and through the meetings that we had there. And with the people, we agreed with the people who sat on that committee. So as a structure, as a structure, I'm not at all open to, to changing the general plan as far as giving direction as to what priorities are, that's, that's still open. You know, what, what's in that, what's in that general plan? If this, if this meeting is to actually come and revisit the general plan, I think it's gonna fail. I don't know that you're gonna get much more public participation than the usual people that we see in this room or up in this council. I hope you do. I hope you do, but I don't know how you, what you have that you, that draws people into this process any more than what we, we see here. We say, I hear a council member, and some of us, Stephanie and I at least, have been here for, on here for 16 years, we see the same people in this room all the time.
I know, Dennis, I feel the same way.
I hope that you have, there's some magic that's out there that gets public participation.
Well, let me address a couple of things you said. One, I, we, we do not want this to be anything but a positive experience. We don't want people to come in with, with a lot of negatives. We're gonna say that out in front. We're going, what we're, the way we think we're gonna get people to come to this meeting is that we're gonna be walking door to door. We're gonna have a big, lot of people working on this, a big team of people working on this. And we are going to hand-invite as many Capitolans as we can see face to face, because that's the way, you know, you all, you've all run for council, that is the way you get votes, and that's the way you get support, and that's the way you get people to wanna talk to you, is to look at them face to face. You can invite them to meetings on a scroll, or in the newspaper, or whatever, all you want, but the way you get people to participate is one-on-one, and that's how we're gonna get people to participate in this. And I just wanna guarantee you that I am a positive kind of person, and I don't wanna see any negativity in this at all. We're gonna get some, but we're gonna steer it away from that. This is supposed to be a positive exercise, that people come away from feeling better about their community.
Thank you.
Stephanie, any questions? Josh?
Yeah, I like, I like what I heard in one sense. And I agree with Dennis. I, I like the general plan process. Ed and I were part of that and I think we put a lot of effort into that. We did see a lot of people that did do the same. They came to our meetings and they participated in the workshop, the tabletops, they put their ideas out there. And Dennis may be right, some of the same people come to all these meetings. So that's my main point. I really welcome this effort in that we will broaden the participation of this government activity to greater amounts of people in Capitola. I think we'll end up with a better body politic because of that effort. Gail, I also agree with you that you have to go to people's homes and knock on their door. You have to ask people, in that action, it shows that you want them to participate. And sometimes that's all it takes, is that action to tell people, we want you to participate. And I'm a true believer in that. So I really commend this effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay. I'll. Thank you, Gail, for that presentation. I appreciate it. I'll open up to the public. Is anybody from the public like to comment on this visioning process? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Comment?
I think we have to divorce ourselves from being in any way hurt or offended by our possibly flawed general plan process. But I think that anything we can do to hear the citizens of Capitola is not merely valuable, it's vital. I think we have to do it. We have to support it if anyone comes to us and asks us to do something like this. So I would move the recommended action to authorize staff to provide technical and in-kind support for the proposed community visioning process.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Dennis second. Any comments?
Yeah, Dennis, thank you for a second. I agree. I think it's important to consider that one of our community leaders actually came here with this proposal. And I think the city of Capitola is very lucky that we do have that kind of leadership. I've seen leadership in all the years I've been here on many different levels and I'm glad to see that it will continue. I also like to point out, I think this is the kind of effort that creates more involvement and new leaders come out because of that involvement.
Does anybody have any comments? Gail, I want to thank you for coming up and making this presentation. I think, I'll agree with you on one thing. I think we're all trying to find out what Capitola really wants to do and I think we struggle with that mechanism of how to make that happen. I, I think we believed, I served on the general plan committee, I think we believed when we went through that process that that was going to be, bring out people to do that. And maybe there was a shortcoming, you know, or maybe it was a little one-sided. So I'm going to be optimistic on this and, and hope that your plan, your proposal, your, your operation brings people out. And they do come and, and offer insight. Because I, I think ultimately, it's easier for all of us to move forward and make decisions if there's a real consensus from a large group that this is the way that the city wants to go. So, yeah, go ahead.
Who knows if there'll be a consensus? But I also just, I forgot to invite all of you. We really want all of you to be there. And I know various of you have different ideas about going to these kinds of public meetings, but I, I think it would be an opportunity missed if you didn't, if you didn't go.
Okay. Thanks. All right, there's a motion on a second. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll move on to the next item. Item E, unpermitted vacation rentals code enforcement.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. This item is before you tonight as a result of proliferation we've had with unpermitted vacation rentals throughout the city, which has been prompted largely from the increase in online hosting platforms like Airbnb and Verbo. That's resulted in staff getting a lot of increased code complaints from neighbors as well as requests from planning commissioners and I believe a couple of council members in the past to visit some of our enforcement options to crack down on the unpermitted vacation rentals. So as you're well aware, our current rules and regulations, the city does have a transient rental overlay zone, which restricts the area which you can have a permitted vacation rental in the city. Areas outside of the TR overlay zone are prohibited to have a vacation rental. Those operations that are in the overlay zone must register as a vacation rental. They must also pay TOT taxes and obtain a business license. Our enforcement program, as you're aware, is complaint-based. Typically, when we find out about unpermitted vacation rentals, it's from a neighbor calling us to complain about it, from noise, partying, parking concerns, things of that nature. From staff's perspective, once we do receive a complaint, we inspect the property to verify that there actually is a vacation rental, look at the online hosting platforms, and then we'll notify the operator and give them an opportunity to come into compliance. Typically, we'll give them 10 days to stop the operation. For those rare instances where they don't comply, we will use administrative citations and we have the ability to fine $100 for the first violation, 200 for the second, and 500 for each violation thereafter. Staff did an extensive amount of research over this past summer to determine the extent of the problem. And based on our review of the various online hosting platforms, we found that there are 49 non-compliant vacation rentals throughout town. 25 of those were inside of the transient rental overlay zones. In other words, they could come into compliance by obtaining permits, paying taxes, and getting a business license. And then we have 24 that are outside the overlay zone, which would really have no option but to shut down their operation. This map just depicts the areas where we found unpermitted vacation rentals. As you can see here, the concentration is, not surprisingly, right around the village area, but there are some scattered throughout, throughout the city. The challenge that we have as staff is really enforcing a lot of these, these operators. It often turns into a cat and mouse game where we contact somebody who's renting out a unit without a permit and they simply change their listing, take it down, we'll change it to more than 30 days, and make the case that they're letting their family use it, their friends use it, it's only a long-term rental. And it's often difficult for us to obtain evidence to satisfy a burden of proof standard should they challenge a code enforcement action. It can be very resource-intensive and time-consuming for staff to continually monitor these alleged rentals, particularly when you have as many as, as we found during our, during our research. Nonetheless, we are bringing a proactive code enforcement sweep proposal to you this evening. Our proposal would be, first, we want to inform the public that we are going to do proactive code enforcement. We put some information on the webpage to set the rules and regulations, permitting process, and some frequently asked questions. Our January newsletter that'll be going out here in a matter of days is going to have another article about the restrictions on vacation rentals, where they're allowed and what the process is to permit one and the consequences for operating an unpermitted rental in other areas of the city. We would also notify those suspected operators of unpermitted vacation rentals. And our code does offer us the opportunity to cite real estate agents and even online advertising platforms like Verbo and Airbnb if they continue to advertise illegal vacation rentals. So we'd also notify those folks that they must cease and desist aiding and abetting some of these operators. Our notices would include the evidence we have of an unpermitted operation, again, our summary of our rules and regulations and instructions for compliance. These operators would owe the city back taxes and business licenses, but we are proposing it'd be to offer partial amnesty up to, beyond six months of back taxes. We would waive if they voluntarily came into compliance. That's certainly a policy matter that you may want to discuss and, and direct us otherwise. We've also initiated contact with Airbnb to discuss adding a TOT assessment for those sites that they advertise on their website. Unlike Verbo, Homestay, and some of the others, they actually collect the money from these operators, so they're able to assess that tax for the city. It's, it's a little bit tricky. We're working through some machinations with them, but there's an opportunity there. We're investigating. Unfortunately, those other platforms don't really offer any form of cooperation to collect the tax for the city. So our proposed timeline would be to put out the newsletter here in a matter of days, put out some information on our webpage this month, and then begin sending notifications to operators and listing agents, January and February of this year. And then by late winter, early spring, starting to follow up with citations for those operators that don't come into compliance. Again, this would be a code enforcement sweep. We're not proposing to have an ongoing proactive code enforcement operation. However, we would re-initiate these sweeps as needed to kind of keep the problem under control. And that concludes my presentation and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions for the community? Councilman Turner?
I have a question for Tony. Is it possible for those, some of these other sites, for us to institute any kind of legal complaint or proceedings? I know a lot of it would be purely, you know, an act of defiance and we, I don't know that we'd get anywhere, but we'd certainly get some attention.
There is a somewhat unique aspect of Capitola's ordinance. It was adopted in 1990, but it appears to have been way ahead of its time in terms of anticipating the types of venues by which people can rent out their, their homes and residences. And it specifically, it prohibits these transient rental uses, but it also specifically prohibits any person from advertising for a transient rental use or for compensation arranging or helping to arrange transient, transient rental uses. And, you know, from the research that I've done, which has been admittedly not a whole lot, but a significant amount, because, you know, other communities that we represent have dealt with this issue, too. I'm not seeing that in a, in a municipal code or in a city ordinance regulating short-term rentals. So it's somewhat unique provision. It applies, you know, on its face directly to the types of activities that these websites engage in. And so while the mechanism for enforcement, I think we need to be pretty careful about because they're, you know, they're major corporations and they're very active in defending their, their economic interests, we certainly will contact them and communicate the requirements of our municipal code to them and then, you know, proceed one step at a time. But based on just the way the ordinance is written, I would say, yes, we, we do have recourse against them.
It'd be nice to get their attention.
I, I'm sure we will.
Any other questions? I'll open up to the public for any comments on this issue. Hello, Richard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Richard Libby. I, I just have a question. I did some research on this, maybe not enough, but at what point does a rental become a vacation rental? What's the definition?
Less than 30 days, isn't it? Less than a month-to-month, 30-day rental. Less than 30 days.
Less than 30 days is, is considered a vacation rental. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments from the public? Hello, Nels.
Been a while.
Yeah.
I'm Nels Westman. I'm a resident of Riverview Terrace in R1 neighborhood. I have read the general plan and have repeatedly heard this council say that one of their highest goals is to protect Capitola, the quality of life in Capitola's R1 neighborhoods. And in my opinion, the growing proliferation of short-term or vacation rentals in R1 neighborhoods is exactly the sort of threat from which the council has pledged to protect us. You know, I hear friends say, we visited Paris and we stayed in this cute little apartment that we got through Airbnb or Verbo. And it sounds pretty harmless, I suppose, but the problem with this Capitola is not Paris. Capitola's beach and coastline make it a recreational destination. Ditto homes on lakes and rivers and ski areas and so forth. And typically, visitors rent these for family and group vacations. They often fill them to a loud capacity, maybe even a little over-loud capacity, often have multiple vehicles, and typically celebrate their vacation to the maximum extent allowed by law. As the old saying goes, every night is New Year's Eve. I know this, as we typically rent Verbo houses for such getaways as scuba diving trips, fly fishing trips, water skiing. We try to be reasonably considerate of neighbors, but as they say, hell, this is our vacation. We paid a lot of money for this place and we are going to enjoy it. Party on. Vacation rentals are just not compatible with the quiet enjoyment of an R1 neighborhood. So I would encourage the council to maintain the current rules about rentals and vacation rentals in R1 neighborhoods and enforce them. Take neighbors' complaints seriously, respond and take firm action. The planning department has spent a great deal of time updating the general plan and writing zoning laws. This is an excellent time to enforce them. I think that in the face of effective city enforcement, in the face of effective city enforcement, you will see a dramatic decline in these illegal vacation rentals. And just tagging on to the conversation that you just had, I think it would be a disservice to the citizens to just do a one-time sweep and say, we made our best effort, because there's money involved here. And when people sense that this is sort of a flash-in-the-pan effort, lip service effort, and they can just go back to business as usual as soon as this sweep is over, it really won't correct the problem. To me, the problem is not dealing with Airbnb or Verbo and all of their lawyers and resources. The problem is dealing with our neighbors and our fellow citizens and making sure they understand that these illegal activities are not appreciated and they're not neighborly and they're also illegal. And I would depend on them to do the responsible thing, which is to say, okay, we got the message. We're going to, we're going to knock off the short-term rentals. So make, make a serious effort at this. I'm sure that there are many other cities now who are dealing with the same problem and they've come up with some pretty good tactics as far as finding out really who's doing it and how they're getting away with it. And, you know, you might come up with some practical tips about how to nip this in the bud here in Capitola. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Nels. Anybody else from the public like to comment on this issue? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and bring it back for discussion. Josh?
I just have a question, Steph.
Sure.
Rich, how easy is it to make a complaint? And how often do you get complaints? And if you could comment on the nature of the complaint, what are citizens concerned about when they feel they've discovered an Airbnb rental next door in their neighborhood?
Well, we, we try to make it pretty easy to make a complaint. We do keep a form online. We get a phone call, emails, you know, as long as something's submitted in writing to us and it's not anonymous. We do require a person to identify themselves, although we do maintain their confidentiality. So we try to make that process easy. The volume of complaints on this issue, I think we get a lot more in the summertime where we might get, you know, one a week or, or more. This time of year, it's quieted down because I think there's a lot fewer people renting vacation rentals. The types of complaints we get typically are parking, noise, a lot of people coming in at odd hours of the evening, littering, those types of nuisance effects.
So that sort of reflects what Nels is talking about?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. My other question, if I may.
Go ahead.
You mentioned that you would do a sweep as it seems like you need to. What would that be? What's the threshold there? Are you thinking about something regular or when complaints start rising again or what's, what's your thought on that?
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to clarify a little bit. The intent would be to have a real concentrated effort up front and to go after the, you know, suspected violators and to stay on them. We would continue to monitor them. If their listing came up again in six months, we might issue another fine at that point. It wouldn't be to completely walk away from the problem. But certainly, I don't think that we candidly have the manpower to have a full-time concentrated effort monitoring vacation rentals throughout the city. But if we notice an uptick in complaints, certainly during the busy tourist season, maybe we keep a closer eye on it. So I think it's something that we'll continue to monitor, but we wouldn't focus, you know, as much time on it perpetually.
Okay. Thank you.
Stephanie?
I'd really like to see us change the sign ordinance when we get around to that and not allow this size sign in an R1 area that says vacation rental and a telephone number. Because they're in R1 areas and they shouldn't be, but they're there. And then I know when you contact them, they say, oh, it's for 30 days or more. If they're going to play that cat and mouse game, let's allow them to have a little tiny sign this big that says vacation rental. Because it's, you know, with, with a name and a telephone number. Because across from the Shatterbrook, there was one last week that I think I, that I gave, I didn't give you the address, but I, it's right across from the Shatterbrook. Big. Big vacation rental sign, R1 area, you know, we shouldn't allow that. And, you know, right, you know, at the corner by the Smith's house, the corner of just on Capitola Road going up by her house, what's that street there? Going over to Prospect. Anyway, in that one corner, there's a big old sign, vacation rental, you know, half the time. And so I'd really like us to look into that. And if, I know that we allow signs for home occupancy use businesses, maybe it should be that size. Or if that's, that's this size, make that one smaller too. But I, I mean, I think that, at least that would make the neighbors feel a little bit better that, that, you know, it's going on, but it's not being advertised so much, I guess, and it's just not in their face. If I lived in a neighborhood and I had one of those signs, I'd just be furious every time I walked by it or drove by it. I'd just say, you know, I'm sorry, that you're not, yeah, you can do it for 30 days, but you don't need to have a sign there. You can, if you're going to rent it to a tenant, you know, there's lots of other ways to, you know, to get roommates and stuff, you know, you don't, but that's a vacation rental, so I don't know if the council would, you know, we can't make a decision on that tonight, but maybe when that comes up, you know, later on, we can, we can look at making it a little more difficult for these people to advertise, at least around town. They can still do it online and so forth, but they're not going to have this, you know, big sign up.
We'll have to bring that back.
Yeah.
No discussion. Councilman Norton, you have a comment?
Can we go back to the slide that shows the larger, the vacation rental zone? When, the previous slide that we showed, I counted like 20 dots maybe outside of the zone? Okay. Twenty? Twenty-five. Twenty-five outside the zone, okay? Okay. I think that the ruling's pretty clear now. In other words, this is the zone that you're allowed to have vacation rentals if you do it legally. Okay? Okay? That rule's defined, and anything that's outside of the zone, which is defined, is not legal. I don't care who you are. I don't care if you're the House on Prospect or who you are. If you're not allowed to do it, you're not allowed to do it. So I, you know, I really think that the present ordinance works fine. We just have to do initial enforcement and make the community aware that vacation rentals are only allowed within that zone, and find some way to make the people that are in the zone, that are using those vacation rentals, to exercise the responsibility there. And collecting TOT tax, if you charge it on rent, just like anybody else, you charge it on rent, you charge on top of it and then require vacations by the city, whoever's doing it, to take care of doing that to the city. The city should not have to put huge amount of manpower and time into regulating what we see here. I think it can be done with a reasonable amount of policing.
We'll see.
Comments?
I'm sure we have very few complaints, but I think unless we do this periodically, it's going, it will get out of hand very, very quickly. So we start now so that everyone knows if they're out of the district and they're renting through an online service, they're going to get found and they're going to get fined. So I would move a staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
I have one other question.
Second.
Continue discussion.
Sorry. Would you go back to the slide on the fines, please? So this hasn't worked? Or do you don't know?
I'm sorry?
What was the question?
I, I'm not sure. This doesn't work, I mean, at this point. I mean, there's no fines. I'm a little unclear on this at this point.
Well, there haven't been that many situations where we've gotten into a situation where we find. I mean, we've been fortunate that most of the suspected violators come into compliance, although we've had probably an equal number that did game us. You know, they change the list into 30 days or more, and they wait for us to fall asleep to the wheel, and then they'll change it back. So it requires a lot of monitoring. The one thing that I would point out with fines is, you know, if you do have a high-priced vacation rental and you give them $100 fine, it's a small tax.
That's sort of what I'm getting at.
You know, you really get into the repeat violators, or you hit them with $500 a day, where it starts hitting them in the pocketbook. Something that, you know, we will monitor and will report back to the council for really not having any success, we may want to look at the fine structure for this particular use type.
Okay, well, I'll rewind the story, but we have a tree ordinance. I think Dennis brought it up once. A guy went and cut down a bunch of trees, and the fine was minimal compared to, he got his trees cut, and it didn't make any difference at all. And there's a lot of regulations in the city, and where's the enforcement arm? So I'm wondering if these fines are enough. It certainly hasn't done much, as you said. You rent out that room, you certainly get a heck of a lot more return than $100 on the first time if you even get caught. So I don't know if the city council would like to increase the fines.
That's not on the agenda tonight. I mean, my recommendation would be that, you know, we give the code enforcement proactive approach a try, and if we find that, you know, the operators are continuing to violate because the fines are too small, you know, it's something we can bring back to the council for consideration to change that structure.
Does the motion that's on the table right now include the amnesty?
It includes the entire statute. But I would like to add to it, if it's okay with the Secretary, that the city attorney look into filing, you know, taking some legal action, even if it's filing a complaint against the corporations running the websites that facilitate this.
You okay with that recommendation?
We're looking forward to doing that.
I'm sure you are.
Before I call the question, I just want to weigh in a little bit. I agree with Councilman Turman, this is a serious issue, and it's pretty much a runaway freight train as it is. I had some dialogue yesterday with the mayor from Pacific Grove, and their situation is exponential compared to ours. What, and what, the sentiment you're making, Rich, is that, you know, we don't have the manpower to enforce this. And I think what it's going to come down to is, is we're going to need to write the letters, we're going to need to go out and do the scan, and we're going to need to try to light the fire. But these people are gamers, and it's probably going to take eventually another serious effort or financial commitment from us to maintain the quality of life in our town, because that's what we're talking about. Because this, the monetary potential for people to rent their homes is extraordinary. I mean, the money they're bringing in is, makes it far worth running the game on the city to try to do this. So it, it's going to take a serious commitment. This is, this is the version of what Uber has done to taxis, is what's happening to our rentals. And, you know, obviously, it's going to take a big commitment. So with that, I'll go ahead and call the question. All in favor of the proposal? Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for that, Rich. Okay, that brings us to the end of the scheduled meeting. The meeting is adjourned. We will now take a couple minutes and then prepare for the meeting of the City of Capitola Successor Agency, the former Capitola Redevelopment Agency. Thank you.
$1,200 for the Santa Cruz Housing Authority, the Rental Assistance Program. $40,000 for administrative work, and $213,000 for the Rissman Perry Park ADA improvements, for a total of $569,895. With your guys' approval, it'll go to the Oversight Board on January 20th, and pending their approval, staff will submit it to the Department of Finance before February 1st of this year, 2016.
Any questions, staff?
I just want to refer to a question I had about the settlement, if you could answer that, and maybe repeat it for the benefit of the audience.
Sure. So the question came up in regards to the Rissman Perry Park, the settlement agreement in terms of both the payment to the individuals as well as the improvements, the ADA improvements. Doing a little bit of research with the city manager, the reason that the city's on the hook with the successor agency for the ADA improvements is that was outside of our insurance coverage since it became a constitutional measure and not a tort measure. The tort on the injury, the insurance company did cover a large portion of that, of that settlement. But in terms of the ADA improvements, that's constitutional, our insurance company would not cover, and so it's being split 50% with successor agency, 50% with the city.
City Attorney? I guess I need to be informed. What does it mean, a constitutional issue?
The compliance with ADA regulations is not within the scope of the covered liability.
Okay, so...
So the construction related to remedying the features of the park that were not compliant with the ADA is not considered damages or liability for which liability insurance provides coverage.
But reminding the board, the settlement claim with the plaintiff was about $300,000, a little bit less. And of that amount, Ambeja Insurance Group paid half of that, and then the remainder was split roughly 50/50 between the city and the successor agency. Now what we're dealing with is the improvements that we agreed to make to fix the problems, and that's 50/50 city, successor agency.
Yeah, I met that lady in my campaign, and did spend some time talking with her.
Okay, thank you. Anybody in the public like to weigh in on this option? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for a recommendation. Motion to accept? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Motion carries unanimously. And that will bring us to the adjournment of the successor agency, redevelopment agency. Thank you. Good night, Capitola.
Good job. Good job.
First one of the year.